So we're back in session, therefore we're out of recess and we're back to start with environment and sustainability, is that correct, CAO Eleanor?
Yes.
Okay. Jessica Corkum-Gorill.
Thank you Mayor Brown and members of council. Pleasure to be here with you all today, speaking on behalf of the environment and sustainability, the fabulous department that it is. And representing a fabulous group of people that are behind all this great work will, at a high level, be touching on today. So who are we? So we deliver high-quality programs and services to ensure the sustainability and climate resilience of Charlestown. We work with internal people to manage cities' natural assets, reduce carbon emissions, ensure city operations are environmentally, socially, economically sustainable. And we also work with external agencies, groups, and people on programs that enhance our natural areas, provide ecosystem services, provide sustainable transportation, work on energy efficiency, and food security and climate resiliency. So we touch on a lot of different environmental aspects. You name it and we probably assist in some way with it. So we work on energy reduction, both within city buildings with Public Works, and we do residential programs like Switch and Better Homes. We do climate action planning with internal departments and with the public. We do urban forest management, monitoring, planning, manage contractors, coordinate tree-tree planting, park tree planting, invasive species removal, and enforce a couple of bylaws. We are taking an inventory and monitoring and maintaining our natural assets. We work on water conservation projects and support water and sewer. We work on flood residential rebate programs. We work with Public Works and Parks and Rec on active transportation planning, community engagement. We coordinate the operation of public transit in the capital region. We work on waste reduction, both as a corporation and engaging residents. We work on food security programs and community gardening in Charlestown. And we work to push the envelope on sustainable procurement to make sure when we're buying goods and services, we're doing it with equity and the economy and sustainability and all these things in mind. And these are some of our achievements. I just touched on some within the last couple of years. And I always say to people that if you invest in the people behind our department, we'll bring lots of money to deliver programs at a really low cost to the city. So this is from our annual report where we received $11 million in external funds, and that was through things like our FCM loans, 0% interest loans, federal and provincial government support to our transit system, and then tons of grants from TD, Tree Canada, and lots of others. We delivered a program for residents to do upgrades to their houses for a total of $9 million in capital given out, and $80,000 in flood rebates to residents at no cost to the city for either of those programs. And we also gave out 175 trees to homeowners through our relief program, again at no cost to the city. We delivered Phase 1 of our Climate Action Plan, and we just celebrated last month for the first time ever since transit's inception, a million riders. We are working, as mentioned, with Public Works and Parks and Rec on active transportation, and we just completed a milestone on that with the perimeter AT path, which now allows people to travel from Stratford to Cornwall through Charlestown to the hospital to the airport, all on off-road connections. After Fiona, our department processed 1,600 applicants for tree support on residential property, and staff-coordinated work on around 600 street trees. This year, we more than doubled the amount of trees and shrubs we put in the ground. 2,607 were planted on city property. And we have a ton of great partnerships and work with thousands of people every year. And thanks to the Communications Department, I think our department gives the corporation a lot of positive media coverage, and the media does pick up a lot on what we do in our department, and I think that's pretty exciting for us. This list might seem long, and I'm glad that Richard pointed out that we should celebrate our achievements and not just focus on our challenges, but of course, there's challenges. And a lot of these we're already working on, but I just thought to be open and kind of transparent, I would touch on some of them. We're working on an update on the official plan, which is really needed for our department to really have a strong backbone behind what we do, what we're recommending for the real protection and growth of our natural assets, and for building complete communities. So when we're developing and approving developments, there's a requirement of developers to consider public transit, active transportation, street trees, and all that. It's all thought on the front end, instead of being reactive at the back end and having to figure that out later. The second point speaks to that as well. I think it's a bit of a past practice to not require developers to put trees in the ground when they're developing residential communities. So we're challenged with these places being developed and designed, and then us having to find space for trees after the fact. So putting that at the front of the project is crucial, and not relying on the city to green the community after the fact. Especially for climate action planning, we kind of have to know what we have and what we're protecting, and before we can protect it from climate challenges. So making sure we have an asset management inventory and plan. Even before Fiona, we had a backlog of tree maintenance requests and stumping, and now that has increased pretty drastically. We have a tree protection bylaw that, similar to other bylaws, thankfully, we don't have too many people that don't follow it, but when they do, it requires some budget from the city to enforce that, oftentimes more than the cost of the ticket. And we've been working on sustainable procurement, which is really important, and there's a need for the procurement bylaw to be rolled out, which we're working on as well, or Finance is working on. We want to see a food strategy put in place to address Charlestown's food system and make it more climate resilient, and address food insecurities for the public. And we're looking for guidance in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, and reconciliation. And that's come from the team, that they're looking for some input on how, as a corporation, we're integrating that into our programs. And I think this kind of speaks to a lot of people, but you know, staffing level and resources, departments like Communications and HR and Finance are the core of the municipality, and if they're understaffed, then that impacts all the other departments. So we really rely on those departments to support us, and I think we've been improving in the area of hiring people, but staff have really felt that over the last few years, for sure, and I look forward to the time when we're a fully-supported comms, HR, finance, Public Works, every department has what they need to deliver what we want to deliver. And then as far as priorities, climate action is really the umbrella for our department, and so whether staff on our team are working on energy efficiency, or active transportation, or sustainable transportation, or natural area protection and growth, it all feeds back to climate action. Next year, we will be still working on our Climate Action Plan, and that's a big deliverable for our department next year. I'm really proud that it's going to involve a lot of community engagement, and I think there'll be a lot of strength behind the plan because of that. And very excited that we're going to have, for the first time ever in January, a staff person focused on sustainable transportation. So we're really going to be able to sink our teeth into making transit the best it can be. We're working on a strategic plan right now for transit to identify priorities, so that person will really dive into that report and work towards the goals in that plan, and also be a leader on active transportation to work with Public Works and Parks and Recreation, to be at the forefront of that planning and funding recruitment and coordination. Urban forest and natural areas work is always ongoing, but I think Fiona really shone the light on the need to keep budget and attention focused on that. The more we maintain our trees, the more resilient they are in a storm. So if they haven't been pruned in 20 years, they're more likely to show that in a storm. And food security and waste reduction, I touched on that, so I'm really excited at the people's names that came forward for the Food Council, and I'm really excited about the work that that's going to have connected to the Climate Action Plan. We work on waste reduction initiatives, and we'll continue to do that next year, so that's looking at our internal waste, and also helping the residential and business community on that as well. And then tied into everything we do, it's all about community, because we're here to help the public, engage the public, and the environmental sustainability side of what we do is really all about people, and so that's going to be a priority for us, is to continue to talk to people and meet with people. The little graph at the bottom touches on transit ridership, the little dip is around COVID, but transit is on the upswing and I think will continue to be, given that the cost of living is expensive and the population is growing. And that's it, thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do you want to speak? Gus Bruner?
Excuse me. I'm not sure everybody knows yet the announcement that was made this morning, which we got some extra funding from the provincial government for expanding our transit system. Right now, it's a pilot project for December, runs on Saturdays. Stratford and Cornwall will be doubling the runs, we'll be doing the extra runs on Saturday, and then Saturday evening from 7:00 to 9:30 will be the on-demand runs. That will go every Saturday during December, so over the holiday season and the Christmas shopping season, and the opportunities there to continue to do these extra runs. The other thing I want to bring up, Your Worship, was, by the way, that starts December 2nd, those extra runs are going to go through the month of December. And conversations with the managers this morning, there's a very good chance to continue that particular run on Saturdays throughout the, not just the rest of the year, I guess, but with the transit plan, some of the growth in the transit runs, to have this expansion full-time. So, but I also want to thank Council for the extra funding that we've gotten on the last budget, when we talked about the damage from Fiona and that, so we have the extra staff, the better management of urban forests, and to basically reinstate a lot of the damage from Fiona. So the first year was a really good year, just seeing there was over 2,000 trees throughout this planet, I think 2,600 and some, so a really good start. So I think there's times you have to say thank you, because Council would have approved that extra funding, so, thank you.
Gus Bruner?
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica, for your report. I'd just like to extend a thank you to you and your team for all the great work that you do, especially with the Fiona tree support and cleanup and the work that was done over the last year. Regarding the transit riders, and just more from my own understanding, you talked about a great milestone of over 1 million riders this year for the first time, which is, sounds wonderful, and I'm sure that's a great milestone. Does that mean every person who steps through the front door? And how did you get to the 1 million? Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Council. I'm retart. So 1 million riders, that's specific to Charlestown, so we run transit as a capital region, but that's specific to Charlestown. So every person that steps on a bus is counted. So some of the buses are equipped with the technology to count it without the driver being involved, and then some buses don't have that, so they are literally manually counting every person that gets on the bus. So that's, it could have, if, so if a person takes the bus to work and then gets on it again and goes home, that would count as two rides. Yeah.
Counsel Peck?
Thank you for your report, Jessica. I applaud a lot of the initiatives that are being undertaken. I did have, I read before, when I woke up this morning, I read an article about the electric buses in Edmonton, and it wasn't a good news story. Hopefully, and I certainly support, you know, our efforts in electrification and all that. I just, I know it's unfortunate, and I don't know the full story about what took place in Edmonton, actually, but it was, hopefully, as we move towards that process, there might be maybe some lessons we may learn from that, from their circumstance, and I know some of it might be temperature-related because of their climate is different, climate is different than ours, but... But I certainly, I'm encouraged by a lot of what has been done and what's looking to be done, which is great. And I just, as we, I think, we just got to be conscious of what has taken place elsewhere, and maybe there might be some lessons that we can learn from that, too. So keep up the, good work and the right track, and it's nice to have you officially solidified into position now, too, so as a recent development, too. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Tarte.
I just want to comment on that, because I'm not sure if you read the whole article, but at the end of the day, very few breakdowns, just they didn't have a lot of parts.
Yeah, and Proterra went bankrupt.
Yeah, and the particular company, probably was the great company for them to be buying them from, but as far as, are we concerned about that? Not really. And it was very few of their electric buses, just that they didn't have the parts. And so unfortunate, but I think that's one of, that goes towards, when you look at our, when we tender out, we do a scoring system, there's a good reason why we do a scoring system. There may have been a lower price, but you get what you pay for.
And I know, Mr. Chair, when we did the bus tour with Nova, Matthew Casti, who was with us, he said they're looking at all the pluses and minuses of any system. They're dealing with Flyer out in Winnipeg, and I believe Nova's out of Winnipeg, too, or Provo, Quebec. Okay, Counselor McLeire, sorry.
No, just staying with the theme and what Counselor Beck was saying, and also seemed to say in articles, but we also know the other thing in the province with the, province and the school buses, you know, they're brand new, and you know, there's issues with those. And I think Mayor Brian, you shared with me, that might have been a particular company that, or whatever.
Yeah, it is.
But I guess the takeaway for me, anyway, and I guess doesn't escape, I'm sure, sustainability and your team, that, you know, these contracts and the conditions and warranties, and you just hope, you know, that the great due diligence is done, and I'm sure it will be so. Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Tarte.
Sorry. No, I just want to point out, too, that that's why, I think, when you look back, especially that article, when you look back at staff's recommendation for, you know, going out with the three bids for the tendering for the electrification of our bus system, the new building. I mean, that's why it's important to get people in the know that have the experience and do it right. So, thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was, you know, and I know that we are doing our due diligence and we're exploring it to find the best.
Yeah.
And it's just sort of, I guess, further confirmation that it is important to do that, so that we don't end up in that situation. Didn't want anyway imply that there wasn't any due diligence going on, just sort of, I think it's kind of pause, it was kind of like a pause for concern moment. And I think sometimes if it looks, things do look too good to be true, sometimes they are not too good, if you know what I mean. So I think that's, you know, I certainly appreciate the work that has been done and the diligence that has been taken. So I guess that's just sort of another note for us to continue down that route and make sure that we're making the best decisions for us.
And so just another point, the issues at the school buses that we're having here on Prince Edward Island were the same issues that we're dealing with two years ago in New Brunswick, and I passed that on to the government of the day, but they went with the same supplier. So again, it's all about parts, especially batteries. And this Proterra, it's in Chapter 11, it owes out a lot of money. So that a great idea, but didn't have the backing. Okay. Well, that's it. Did you want to sum up just before you go, Eleanor?
Thank you, Worship, for this particular one. I haven't heard any priorities or actions come out of that, other than maybe we all take due diligence with our contracts. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica. Okay. Okay. Where's the Chair of Parks and Recreation? Is he on the phone?
Yes, he's not working.
Okay. Frank? Frank, the Chair is not here, but you can go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Your Worship. And, all right, and thank you, council, for this opportunity, and Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you.
It's really, it's a great opportunity for departments, I think, to actually explain what we do and give a high overview, and sort of put forward, you know, some of the, you know, our achievements, which I always like to celebrate our achievements, focus on them, but also some of the challenges. And there has been a lot, especially coming out of COVID, really has shaken things up and changed things in all departments, so. All right, so you'll just kind of go quickly through the slides here, and I need my readers on, and I don't need them on to see the screen, so you'll see me looking up and down like a bobblehead. So the Parks and Recreation Department strives to enhance the quality of life for people who live and work within our municipality, as well as those who visit. So that is our biggest focus, and I think the biggest thing out of COVID as well that came is that the value of Parks and Recreation really, I think, was brought to the forefront. People needed to get out of their house, they needed to, you know, get out and be active. And, you know, being inside and not being associated with people, that social interaction and whatnot, was really obvious. And we found that, you know, we were opening our trails as safely as possible, you know, and opening playgrounds and putting limitations because they needed to be open and needed to stay open, so. We encourage and provide leadership for development of safe and accessible, diverse and quality recreation opportunities. So we don't deliver all the activities. There's a lot of minor sport groups out there, adult groups, nonprofit groups, that deliver sports and recreation and leisure activities. And we work with many different groups throughout the year to make sure that they are, you know, having successes, and if they need some assistance in certain areas, we offer assistance when we can. And just the department itself utilizes the four benefit areas of Parks and Recreation as a framework when we're evaluating our programs, but also when we're evaluating other groups' programs as well. And, you know, those are, and that's in programs, services, parks, and facilities. And these include the personal, social, economic, and environmental benefits of participation. And it was great that I was following environment sustainability, because I know initially, when that department started sustainability, it actually, I think, started under the Parks and Recreation Department. And Sue at the time was, had taken the lead on that, and then all of a sudden, now, you know, 10 years later, we actually have a department, and the major focus is on environment sustainability, which is great. Just to give a quick overview, I know that of our staff in our department, we are a larger department, but we don't have a large complement of staff. And I think sometimes, you know, people need to realize that. So I know right now, myself as manager, the, just recently hired our assistant program coordinator, which is great, so I'm going to assist with the leadership. We have, sorry, assistant manager, sorry about that. As you can see, my glasses aren't working. Anyway, well, right now, he's actually doing multiple jobs since our assistant program coordinator is not, is off right now. So with regard to that, and then we have an admin assistant here at City Hall, we have our program coordinator, and we have an assistant program coordinator, both those positions we're working on filling right now. We have our arena superintendent, and then we have our two park superintendents, we have an admin assistant to those individuals, and then we have our arena staff. So we'd have our, you know, our staff that runs Cody Banks Arena, we have three permanent staff, and then we have two permanent staff at Simmons and one seasonal. Then in our parks operations, we have a vacancy right now for park formant position, which we're hoping to fill. And we have, with regards to permanent staff, we have six permanent staff in parks that delivers all our services, and we rely heavily on seasonal staff. And I'll be talking about that later. That has been one of the challenges we've been having as well, that with regards to seasonal and casual staffs, we can't hire enough to fill our positions. So that's been one of the challenges we've been having, but, and same with our seasonal as well, and same with the program side as well, so. But that's our organization. We're not a large, large staff department, but we do deliver a wide range of services. I'll go on to the next slide here, which you can see the range of services we do deliver. So we have our parks, our parks operations, and we have three divisions are in our department, and they all work closely together. But, you know, parks operations, we provide and maintain approximately 400 acres of parkland and green space, which includes sports fields, clubhouses, trails, boardwalks, playgrounds, open space, outdoor pools, tennis courts, basketball pads, skateboard park, lawn bowling green, outdoor rinks, now with our multi-sport outdoor facilities. And that alone, for example, we had one in 2019, right now, we're up to four. And then in 2022, we actually also added our portable artificial outdoor rink, so another service we've added. We have our cross-country ski trails, we have the forest areas, natural areas, horticulture display areas, urban gardens, which we work closely with environment sustainability, and then our environmental initiatives as well, that we work closely with environment sustainability. So just for example, and I'll use, for example, in playgrounds, in 2015, we had 62 parks with playgrounds. 2023, we have 68. Having even included in that, we've added about 25% additional playground equipment to all of our playgrounds over the years that we have. So they've been expanded, each playground has. And then just in with regards to infrastructure that is in parks, the, you know, right now in 2023, we have 93 of our parks that have infrastructure in it. And overall number of parks and open spaces is 158 parks and green spaces, and it's continuing to grow. So that has been one of the challenges, as new development happens, we get new parkland, and we're trying to add new amenities to our parks with playgrounds and whatnot, it creates more maintenance and more staffing time. Moving on to programs, we have our direct delivery programs. We also have then, which, you know, fitness classes, day camps, preschool programs and whatnot. We provide support to volunteer groups, and those range all the way from minor sport, adult groups, community groups, but also we provide support to residents and visitors as well. We'll have somebody call us and ask, you know, what type of program would suitable for me to be involved with, and so we provide that through our program brochure, which everyone gets every year, you know, can view online, and has been very beneficial to people looking for different types of activities in Charlestown. In the programming side as well, a big part of the role as well is scheduling of sports fields and sport courts, and these have been extremely busy. And one of the challenges I'll be mentioning is that we don't necessarily have enough. And another program that's been key with our program side of things is our minor sports subsidy program. And this has been in place for many years, and I know other municipalities are, you know, how do you, how are you able to run this? But this program has been very valuable. It enables residents to pay a lower registration fee, therefore resulting in a higher participation level in the minor sports that utilize our facilities. Continuing on what we do on arenas, so of course, we all know Simmons Sports Center, which is being replaced, and the project is moving along nicely. The 22-month schedule, you know, the start in January is on schedule, and I'll knock on wood, let's hope we can keep it on schedule. And I know the number of counselors and some staff toured that facility yesterday, and I hope it was, you know, well-received, because I think it really shows the, how complicated the project is, but what this facility is going to be afterwards. It's going to be a state-of-the-art facility that's going to provide a wide range of recreational and sport opportunities. We also have the Cody Banks Arena, which includes the Maplewood Room, and then we also coordinate with Bell and East Link Center with regards to ice time allocation and other initiatives along the way. With regards to community centers, Public Works oversees the actual maintenance of them, but we oversee the scheduling of the four community centers, which right now, especially this time of the year, are very busy, and that does take up a lot of time of staff coordinating those. And then there's multiple interdepartmental initiatives and projects that we work, and I just mentioned a few here, but, you know, the active transportation file that Jessica mentioned, we've been heavily involved in that, and that was one of those, the active transportation as well started at a Parks and Recreation initially, that's where sort of that had started. We work with on a number of sustainability initiatives, and just, for example, the Simmons Project, we're working on making that net zero ready and moving as far as we can on making that, that facility sustainable as possible. There's also the Victoria Park roadway rehabilitation project that we're working with Public Works on, so upgrading that roadway. And then the other, one of the other areas that has been, especially in the last couple of years, has been capital projects. You know, this year is the largest capital budget the Parks and Recreation Department has ever had. There is over 30 project accounts, but even more multiple projects within those accounts. So that has taken up a lot of time of staff, and we try to, you know, it used to be at one time, one or two staff people would lead all those projects. Now we have that, you know, that we break the projects down to a number of people in our department to manage them because of the sheer volume. But that has been, and as we get more aging infrastructure, it's going to be more challenging and also identifying the necessary funds. So we oversee and manage the development, the upgrades, the replacement of parks, playgrounds, sports fields, arenas, clubhouse buildings, trails, pathways, boardwalks, shoreline protection, multi-sport facilities, sport courts, and so on. So there's a wide range of projects, and oftentimes requires a wide range of expertise. So oftentimes, we're reaching outside the department to find, you know, some support, that could be going to, you know, Public Works, you know, requesting some support from the engineers in those departments, environment sustainability, but also, you know, contracting the private sector to assist with design and whatnot on those projects. Our achievements, the value and importance of Parks and Recreation Services in our municipality continues to increase. And I think the biggest one, like I had mentioned before, COVID-19, really sort of brought to the forefront Parks and Recreation and the value of what we deliver. So that has continued to increase, and for someone myself who's been in the field for near 30 years, it's good to see those changes happening, because we do impact the community. People actually will move to a municipality a lot of times based on the types of recreation and sport opportunities that are in the municipality. Another, one of our achievements is the sports, the Simmons Sports Center replacement project is underway, and it's anticipated to open October 2024. That project, we did a report back in 2012, saying that the project needed to be replaced within 10 years, or the facility did, and we're close to having it replaced within that timeframe. It is over 50 years old, so that's a very, you know, a great project to have underway and hopefully going to have completed shortly. You know, we were able to access funding, and that's always one of the challenges in Parks and Recreation, is to get the necessary capital funding to undertake these large capital projects. The Canada Games Legacy Project, the portable artificial outdoor rink at Founder's Hall Green Space, that was a real, you know, that's one of our achievements as well. We were able to have an outdoor rink last year, when the weather really wasn't that, you know, wasn't really that cooperative to actually allow us to have that. Multi-sport outdoor facilities, you know, with the support of council over the years, we've constructed three new facilities and provided support to a nonprofit group that will be operating a fourth facility, you know. So those are facilities, they're more than just a rink, they're actually multi-sport courts, which is, which is very well-received in the communities. Another one of our achievements with our small department staff and our Parks Division, our response recovery to the, and efforts to the Hurricane Fiona. I'm very impressed with how, you know, how they were able to deal with all the concerns and issues, and also work out to contractors to get their support, work out to, you know, environment sustainability, Public Works. And we've had some really, we've had some great success there, and you know, and there still is more cleanup to do. You know, we've recently, one of our sets as well, has obtained funding to undertake the Victoria Park Shoreline Protection Project, which will be going out to tender very shortly, and hopefully that project will take place during the winter months. And then playground equipment replacement and development. And this has been something that's, you know, started many years ago, but we've done substantial upgrades and have occurred over the past 20 years and continues to be a priority for the city. So I know back, oh, it might have been around 20 years ago, I know Sue probably was the manager at the time. manager at the time, when our, we did assessment of all our playground equipment and needed to do some major upgrades, and we put in an actual capital project every year to actually upgrade. And now we're in a position that we can actually add new structures and not just replacements and whatnot, so. Finally, a couple of our, our challenges, and there's, there's more, but these are sort of the ones that just sort of jump out. One of our challenges has been obtaining and retaining qualified staff, especially at the casual and entry-level seasonal level. And I'd mentioned that earlier, you know, with regards to our, our park staff, we haven't been able to fill all our casual staff. And it's not that we're not trying to get staff, they, they're just not out there, and they don't want to work for the wage that they're being paid. Same thing with our entry-level seasonal staff, it's been a challenge as well. So that puts more pressure on our permanent staff and our existing seasonal staff. And in the programming side as well, that's been a challenge as well. You know, back in 2018, we had 36 programming casual staff. Last year, we had 26. We just couldn't fill all the positions, and therefore those staff, you know, we had to spread out what they did and potentially reduce the, you know, the programming slightly to, you know, to meet the requirements for staff ratio and whatnot. The, another challenge has been maintaining core service levels while addressing requests for increases in certain, in other service levels. Every time we get a new request or, you know, it, it takes, it puts something else on the list and gets, might not get addressed in as timely a fashion. So that's been one of the challenges. It's just that as population has increased, as the number of requests have increased, the, you know, people's, you know, wanting a higher service level, then that puts more pressure on the department. And then managing the, the volume of capital projects. It's great when we get funding for these projects and move them forward and everything, but having the, you know, the staff capacity to manage all those projects. But also actually getting, you know, the companies out there to be able to, you know, provide us the necessary support, like the professional service firms and the, the contractors to do the work. And then just, you know, our another challenge is just upgrading, replacing all the aging infrastructure. That continues to be, you know, a challenge for us. And then meeting and managing the increased number of requests for new infrastructure and support, i.e. pickleball courts, cricket, you know, a number from new, different newcomer groups, the existing sport groups as their, their programs have expanded as well and their numbers have increased. And another challenge is just managing the public expectation relating to Parks and Recreation Services. It's, we are a very face-fronting department. We deal a lot with the public, that's one of our main, our main areas. So we rely a lot of the feedback and input we get from minor sport groups, developing those relationships and whatnot. So that's been one of those challenges as well. And just a couple other I thought of afterwards that are on the list there is parkland allocation has been a real challenge. We oftentimes, and developments happen, we get parkland that are not necessarily suitable for development of houses and, you know, the property for, for apartments, buildings and whatnot. But then they're not, it's not the most suitable for a park as well. So, and also, we oftentimes would like to protect environmental areas, so we'll take those parcels of land as well. But that creates, contrates another challenge that we don't have the necessary large parcels of sport land, parkland for development of sport fields, other types of facilities like that. So that's one of the real challenges we've been facing over the years. And just quickly here, I think I'm taking too long, so I'll speed this up a little bit. So programs and service levels. To continue to maintain the core departmental operational service in parks, programs, and arenas. To identify new approaches to better address additional service and program requests. We, within, within reason, you know, the kind of thing if they fall within that range. To increase the department's capacity to better manage capital projects, and what that means oftentimes is more staff. To continue to be a resource and support the wide range of volunteer organizations that offer numerous other programs and activities in our city. And as new groups come in, you know, that becomes more and more challenges, and it means us becoming experts on different types of programs and activities. And the top five departmental priorities. Hire and retain qualified staff. Open the new Simmons Sports Center in October 2024, which will include increased opportunities for sport and recreation opportunities. Complete the installs for the outstanding playground equipment from 2022 and 2023. That has been a real challenge with our staff shortage, that we have right now, equipment that came in, that came in late, so we weren't able to get it done, but this year, we were hoping to make more inroads into this. We have six swing sets still to install, three independent structures and three medium structures that we have, that we'd like to install. So that's a lot of equipment that would be more than a normal year, so that's one of our priorities to get all those installed. And then also complete a new Parks Master Plan to replace the 2007 version. Within that plan as well, I think we really want to focus on the new types of programs and new groups that have come here and how that's impacting the parks, how parks operate. And then complete a departmental review of all existing core service levels and compile a list of the new requests. Maybe there are some areas that some of these core services can be, maybe they're not needed, and maybe we can look at that can be replaced with some new service requests as well. All right, that's the end of my presentation. Any questions, feel free to ask.
Could I just start off with the Council of Twill as Chair?
Thank you, Frank. Good, good overview, good, good insight. Of course, one of the highlights of Frank's presentation was the, the work in progress in the new Simmons Arena. We had a, a real good visit there yesterday, gave us a snapshot where, where, what phase the construction facility is in. Just by touring that facility yesterday, certainly made, certainly made you proud. And as Sue Fraser said, you know, it's, it's going to be a great legacy left, left for this city, particularly this council. It's something that's going to be around for the next 50 years. And, you know, over the years, people are going to, hopefully, people are going to say, you know, this, this council, this administration, did they do diligence, proper, proper amenities? Facility was constructed right? One of the highlights, I think particularly, and I keep saying it, and I'm going to keep saying it, for our senior citizens that like to be able to walk in a very safe, predictable manner, going to have that opportunity with the new walking track on the second floor. Something I think that they're really going to embrace and gravitate towards, the new ice surface. I think it's going to be great, and that facility is going to be able to go 365 days a year. Was, the last 10 years, we weren't able to use that facility because of the deficiencies with the floor, but now we're going to be able to use that. So there's many possibilities with this new facility, and I'm, I'm really hoping that this is going to be the impetus for the replacement of the Cody Banks Arena. I know that Councilor Matar, Councilor Duran are very, very keen on that replacement, as we all are. So it's never too early to plan. But, you know, Frank talks about many, the many challenges that the department is facing. New groups are coming forward. It's challenging for the department to be able to provide the facilities in these venues, and the new, the new master plan or the revitalized master plan will be able to illustrate some, some of the, some of the things that we need to do to be able to accommodate these different sports. Frank is very modest in terms of, you know, we don't really have a big staff, but we're a very effective and efficient staff, and we do a great job, do a tremendous job. More people are looking for active and passive recreation. That means walking trails, boardwalks, transportation pathways. That connectivity is so important, whether it be from a Public Works perspective, sustainability and environment, or from Parks and Recreation. So we're making big inroads, and a lot of progress has been made over the years. One of the things that Frank mentioned was our playgrounds. We've, I think we're, we're now ahead of the curve in terms of playground replacement, new playground, new playground equipment. That's, that's not only up to standard, but is a great, a great challenge for a lot of the kids that like to use these facilities. And we try to make sure that we're citywide when it comes to playground equipment. The new outdoor rink facilities, don't want to reiterate too much, but we'll open up the floor for questions. A lot of good things happening in Parks and Recreation. It's attributed to our, to our staff, and as a committee, I want you to know that any member of council ever wants to come and visit with our Parks Recreation Committee, be a part of the process, or promote a particular project, the door is always open, you're welcome, and you can always stop in to see our Parks and Recreation Manager, he's always there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Twill. Let's welcome Matt out there, thank you very much. Councilor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, knowing that we know now, I'm just looking at the priorities that Frank put out there, and I'm wondering if we should be adding Frank. Knowing that we're a couple of soccer fields short now, baseball, we know we're at least two fields short. Within the next couple of years, with the registrations growing, they say, within the next two to three, will be another two, there'll be four short. We've had them in for conversations, we've had soccer in. Football, looking for their fields. Rugby, as you know, is looking for two fields. Pickleball, cricket, I mean, we're, we're, it's like, it's like we're falling behind as opposed to, well, we haven't really touched any of the immigrant sports, but we're, we're falling behind a lot of the sports. And I'm wondering if land should be one of the priorities, Frank? I know the annexed land out there in West Raleigh now, that city's boundaries are down to Jewels Country Garden. There's still some conversation going on with the province, and the province is also looking to partner with us on a lot of these sport venues. Do you see that as a priority moving ahead, trying to find some land to get these, get going on these, on these sport venues?
Thank you, Councilor Bernard, Your Worship. Yes, I do. I just kept my priority list to five. There's much more than five. But yeah, no, that is, that's one of our under the capital projects. We'll still be pushing for that, that we need to purchase 20 to 25 acres of land that we can actually develop a sportfield facility complex, because we are falling behind with regards to, you know, you mentioned the sports, soccer, rugby, cricket, you know, basketball, a number of facilities.
Okay, Councilor Ramsey and Councilor Quater.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Frank, for that report. And I, it's only a comment, I'd like to personally thank you, Christopher and Mike White there for the tour yesterday. It's really some building when you go through it, and it'll be much better when we have our second tour, when there's, there's more together to it, but it's fantastic, and I think it's going to work perfect. And as, as the parents seeing my three kids grow up through the old Simmons, it's, it's fantastic. So I'd like to pass on that.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Matar, Councilor McLeire.
Great, thank you, thank you, Frank, for your presentation, and again, thank you for all the work that you and your staff do. I guess if you wait long enough in the queue here, your questions likely get answered. So my question has been answered several times here, but I think what I'll do is reinforce...
I think the doctor answered all the questions.
Yeah, so I'll just reinforce, it was back in, in regard to, over the last year, we have seen a number of requests that have come in from various sporting venues, whether it be pickleball, baseball, or, yeah, baseball, and as Councilor Bernard mentioned, soccer and such. But just was trying to figure out, we know that is coming, where that aligned in the priorities, whether it be in the, the Parks Master Plan or in other priorities. And of course, it's been addressed, so I clearly understand the answer, but I guess now I'm just reinforcing the importance of addressing that in a long-term strategy for additional, you know, sporting fields, venues to allow for the growth of certain sports that are coming to us. You know, primarily, we've seen pickleball as being one that has been really adamant about finding space. So thank you again for the presentation. I just wanted to reinforce what was already mentioned here by several of our counselors.
Councilor Beck and then Councilor McLeire.
Yeah, thank you for that, Frank. One of the things that we've, again, looking at common threads here today, we're, we're looking at our aging infrastructure, and you, you talked about upgrading and replacing our aging infrastructure, and I think all departments are kind of seeing that to varying degrees, right? If I were to say to you, Frank, two, we're in the Christmas season, Santa was to come along and say, little Frank, what, what are you going to get for Christmas this year? And two infrastructure projects that you would like to see addressed, what would you, what would you say to us?
We're listening, Frank.
Thank you, Councilor Beck.
You got the mic, Frank, go ahead.
Let's play this, I couldn't, I couldn't actually just have two. That's, there's so much...
Santa's limited, and you do two.
Two gifts only, buddy.
So we, we've, in our department, we became very, we've looked at other options and how sometimes we can look at, you know, how can we provide a new facility to somebody, like a pickleball courts? Well, let's see if there's an existing facility we have that can be repurposed and upgraded. So we've become very good at that, looking at how we can repurpose facilities. There is other ones, other sports that are going to be more complicated, like for example, a cricket, cricket ball pitch, or cricket, a cricket pitch, that we need large parcel of land. But that is, ultimately, at the end of the day, I think right now, I look at Simmons, that is a project that we've been, you know, advocating for years, and it is, and we wanted it done properly as well, that it's not just an arena, it's a true community facility that's going to be used by multiple different types of sports. People can go there and actually, while their kids are playing, you know, hockey or skating and whatnot, they can watch them, they can get their physical activity as well. People can go and use, you know, the community room for fitness classes. So, yeah, it's, it would be very difficult. You'll see, our list is always, our five-year capital plan will be a large one, like you said, but whenever we look at approving our capital plan, it's just also keeping in mind, does the department have the capacity to actually follow through on all those projects? And sometimes that might mean that we, you know, like everywhere else, we need additional resources and different, additional staff. So I know I didn't answer your question, because really, I can't, I couldn't say I'd be picking and choosing different sports, which wouldn't be, it's not well-received out in the community.
That was a good political answer there, Frank.
No? Good.
Is that all, like Santa?
I'm okay.
Okay. Johnny McLeire, Councilor McLeire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, Frank, just staying with the theme, I have to think it's not if, but it'll be when we get this, let's say, 20, 25 acres and, and, you know, what that would look like, you know, be it rugby fields, soccer, baseball. Is there, has there been any kind of maybe blueprint or vision done of what that would look like if we found that 20, 25 acres, or is that putting the cart before the horse?
Thank you, Councilor. Yeah, so right now it is, because it all depends on what sort of the, how the piece of parkland we, or the piece of land we purchased, what sort of, how it's shaped, that'll decide what can be put into it for facilities. We have more lists of requests than we could accommodate even in that, but there is a higher priority of ones that we'd need, and the other ones we'd look at, maybe there's some other sport fields or areas we could re, you know, repurpose. Let's say a ball field could be turned potentially into a cricket field if another was, field was put there. So that's what we're looking at as well, and that's part of our Parks Master Plan will assist us with that, providing us some, some high-level guidance.
Yeah, just, just on the, on the pickleball thing, everybody recognizes this, this game's exploded. Is there any possibility, and, and, you know, you're not going to have infrastructure, that's not going to get settled overnight, but is there any possibility, and I have no idea, that there could be any, any collaboration with some of the schools, gyms, I guess, maybe not, not during the, not during the day, I guess, but either, you know, evening, weekend for possible uses in the meantime for, for the game?
There could be, and that the pickleball group themselves would advocate for that. We would work with them if we had a facility for indoor facilities. We're working on outdoor facilities with them, and we've been working very closely and have come up with some, I think, some interesting options that I think will work, which will be brought forward during the capital budget discussions. But the indoor facility is a challenge, one, you know, they would have to deal directly with the schools. And I know the current pickleball club, I think, has a good relationship with, with UPI, I believe, from my understanding, and they've been able to attain some, some gym time at that facility, so. And we've worked with them on our West Raleigh Community Center, given them some access there as well. there as well, so.
Thank you.
Councilor McCabe?
There's a lot of talk about the land acquisition, and I don't know what department that falls to. I know that there's been lots of discussion between the province, between the city, and I'd love an update of where that, where we are with that, and if there's been some negotiation, because there's lots of great things that can happen. But until we actually acquire that land, which we should be hopefully looking at getting an update, because there is an opportunity for lots of great things, but we need the land first. So could I ask for an update at a future meeting at some point, to see where we are in those negotiations?
CAO, Eleanor, can you respond to that, just to...
Thank you, and through Your Worship, yes, we can provide an update, an update, a meeting coming up, sure.
So Frank, just on the outdoor multi-use sports venues, we have four, you've got West Rowley, Hillsborough Park, Mulberry Park, are you counting Winslow? The Winslow outdoor facility?
No, the fourth would be actually the original one.
McCray Drive.
Yeah, McCray, East Rowley.
So you plans to update the McCray Drive facility?
That would be one. Elmer McFagin does need to be upgraded, it is past the end of its life. And as we've been moving through, developing in these facilities, we've been actually improving the design. And I think if you go out and look at the Mulberry design right now, I think you'd be very impressed. We're also looking, okay, how can we actually upgrade the Elmer McFagin facility there and make even, you know, additional improvements there as well? We're also, as you're realizing, our weather has been staying warming during the winter months. So how can we make these facilities, you know, higher use during the winter times with, you know, an outdoor rink? So we'll be bringing forward those options during our capital budget discussion.
Yeah. So the Winslow facility, we're just assisting with water, is that correct, and some maintenance?
Correct, Your Worship. So we've actually put in water access, which is going to help us with maintaining the rink. We're going to assist them with getting it started, and then they're going to be able to assist maintaining it, because there's water access right there. It's partly that, you know, Winslow is sort of out further, as you go out trying to think, so we're trying to limit with, you know, transporting water to different locations. So that is an area that we felt, okay, this is a great facility, it's providing a recreational opportunity out in that area, so how can we assist them? And that's where we felt we could.
The five do represent the city in all parts, north, east, west, and south, so I think we're going in the right direction. Just the last one, my question is about the turf field. That was a, I know that it's been brought up many times, there's a list of turf fields' locations. Has that been put on, like, in the oven, or back burner, or on the shelf? Where is it at with lighting?
It is, it's still within our five-year plan, it has been for a number of years. It's going to be a costly project, and there was sort of prioritizing, you know, replacing existing facility, which for example, Simmons needed to be done. And you can only do so much construction out of sight. We also identified, you know, a number of locations, and one of the locations was potentially Simmons, such a good turf field, but we'd have to revisit that, but it is on our list, it's just, where, like, you know, part of it is, our challenge is this with regards to land. We don't have any additional land if we're going to build a turf field elsewhere. It takes up, you know, five acres of land.
Yeah, I just, again, just concluding on that point, in 2009, we built the McCadham Field at UPEI. The pedestals are in-ground for adding lighting to that field out there at UPEI, McCadham Field, which is where they play football. So there is talk about trying to put a turf on that and lighting. Thank you. Councilor Twill?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure what, Councilor McCabe talked about discussions, land discussions. I'm not aware of any discussions with land. So if there's discussions that are taking place, I'm certainly not aware of any. So that's news to me.
I'm assuming if they're discussing...
Pardon? Oh, sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm assuming with your, all the future planning around this land that we've annexed, that there must be discussions, that's why I asked for an update. I certainly don't know of any specific discussion.
Okay.
Hence why I asked for updates.
Okay, okay.
No, 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 we've spoken to the minister from...
Pardon?
East Rowley, the Minister of Agriculture, not you, no, no. And again, that's, or not Councilor McCabe, but no, we've spoken, and it's still all preliminary. There's no, there's no deal signed yet.
I wasn't aware of it.
Oh, no.
To be honest with you, I wasn't aware of it, so that's news to me.
Councilor Bernard?
Anyway...
Another question?
Yeah, well, just a couple of things, you know, we talk about the field turf, Simmons Field, you know, it's definitely a possibility. We have plans there, the CBCL did a number of years ago. It's central. One of the, you know, one of the strong arguments for the replacement of Simmons Field, or Simmons Arena, is where it's at, where it's located, in between two city schools, surrounded by five elementary schools. So it's also a walkable community, and it's central. So again, you know, that's something that we can definitely look at. You know, some of the councilors mentioned here, and I've been a strong proponent of the roadway in Victoria Park, I guess that would be something that would have to be in partnership with Public Works. But that whole rehabilitation of the roadway in Victoria Park, and the inside lane being shut off all year round for, you know, for active transportation users, whether it be cycling, running, jogging, walking, whatever the case may be. As Frank pointed out in his presentation during COVID, that was one of the challenges that we had. And what came out of that was the coexistence of all those user groups that were able to utilize that roadway on the inside. So that's one of the things I think we need to explore as well. So there's many, many possibilities, many projects that can be looked at, and it's exciting times.
Okay. Councilor Bernard?
And I could probably give a little bit of an update, Your Worship, on that annexed land that was talked about in East Rowley, that's been going on for years, as you know.
Between M&amp;M Furniture and...
Yes. So that's been going on for a few years, and it's a possibility, there's nothing...
All preliminary.
Concrete, and that's what I was saying earlier, the government would work with us too, because the area obviously was responsible for Maris Field when it got annexed into the city. So one of the areas, you heard the manager talk, would need at least 25 acres of land. So out in that annexed area, I believe, is the 110 or 111 acres. So the possibility of trying to buy 25 acres doing a sport complex, to be able to alleviate a lot of our shortages of sport fields and so on. But nothing's come from that yet, that'll be up to developer, he's waiting, you know, there's zoning issues to be talked about, there's a price of the property to be talked about, so there's nothing yet, it's just an opportunity possibly to be able to get ahead of our sport infrastructure. And by leaning land, we don't have a lot of land in the city that we own, especially in that magnitude of 25 acres. So it's an opportunity that drops in our lap, can we make the best of it? We're going to try. The government right now is in the process of assessing the value of it. So once they get that value, then, you know, we'll probably have an idea what the cost's going to be per acre. And then it can come to council or Parks and Rec, I assume, where it would go first. I think the manager's been, like I say, this has been something that's been on the books for a couple of years anyway, if not a few years, so.
Yeah, and there's lots of discussions going on, but that doesn't mean a decision's been made, and it will go through the appropriate committee. No one's going, you know, these clandestine meetings are not going on, like, and we're making deals, that's totally false. What we do is, the reach out came from the council from out that area, and that was all it was, a discussion. So we're not moving on anything, it has to go through the appropriate standing committee, which would be Parks and Recreation.
Try it again, Your Worship.
Yep.
I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware there were discussions.
I know what that means, wasn't aware, I understand.
I wasn't aware?
Yeah.
So, so when Councilor McCabe referenced the CAO, right, she's going to give an update, well, that was news to me.
Yep. Well, the update is, any future decisions will go through the appropriate committees.
Right.
Thank you. Good?
I was just going to say, it's been going on for a decade.
Okay.
Want to thank Frank?
Go ahead. Just tap in there, tap in.
I just wanted to thank Frank and Christopher.
For all the work in the department, we've got a great department, and be a lot of progress here in the next few years.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Thanks to the new assistant manager, Christopher Drummond, thank you very much. We do have Paul, some remarks, anything else there, Councilor McCabe?
No, just want to make sure we're following the right process, Your Worship.
Procedure, procedure. Go ahead. Don't go yet, Frank, just double-check with us, make sure she's summarizing.
Thank you, Worship. I think, I think there was probably a lot of commentary there, but trying to pick out what the actual priorities are. The two that I caught was the Parks Master Plan, to evaluate and determine the need for recreational facilities, to kind of track that. And then the other piece was purchasing land for parks in general, not just specific pieces. Those were the two. So does that, sound like that captures the priorities out of that conversation?
Councilor Twill?
Yeah, that one it captured?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Your Worship, and I believe the staffing one, I think the biggest thing, when we're actually, you know, upgrading facilities and approving addition for new facilities and whatnot, keeping in mind, we need bodies to operate them. I'm going to use the example Simmons, that's going to be a new facility, it's going to be twice the size of the existing facility, we're going to need additional staff to operate that facility, which means cleaning and whatnot. It's going to operate, offer more services, but just always keep that in mind, is when we're building new in particular, but even upgrading and expanding, there is a need for, you do reach a limit where you can't actually provide the same level of service, so.
That's true.
Yeah, and just, you know, we got to start thinking about as well as a replacement for Cody Banks Arena. We, you know, it's not too early to start planning, and looking at, you know, what's required there, and I think we've got a great blueprint at Simmons, and this is just me speaking, but we got to start looking at that replacement. And if there's an opportunity there for an outdoor pool, I'd like to see that there as well. Thank you.
Out in Sherwood.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Pool, twin arena, convention center, okay, that would be, we'll have to build up, it's going to be like Madison Square Gardens. Councilor Bernard?
Correct me if I'm wrong, when I thought the consultant's report, and we were building this facility, to be able to be twinned whenever Cody Banks closed, I thought the whole idea of this facility, and where they locate it and everything was, is that, am I wrong there, Frank, or is this is being built to be twinned, is it not?
Uh, Councilor Bernard, there's that option, that's an option that council can consider at the time, or, you know, and the biggest thing is, the amount of users that are requiring arena facilities have increased as well. So we need to look at that as well, so.
Is it being built to be ready, ready to be twinned?
Simmons?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is, there is the ability to twin, if council decides to go down that road, it can actually have a second arena to it, or a second other type of facility.
Okay. Thank you, Frank, and thanks to the new assistant manager there, Christopher Drummond.
Do we need to rank the opening version for Simmons? Pool.
Okay.
You want to go off the diving board?
To the cannonball. Okay, we'll have Paul Johnson here.
Well, he did, he drives up. Again? Again?
Do you know how to use that clicker?
No, Tracy's not doing it, I'll forget.
Next page, back a page, pretty simple.
Mr. Johnson, I know that you have to move quickly, so... We'll go with Mr. Paul Johnston, our manager of assets, and...
IT.
IT's coming up after this guy.
Can we move active after asset management?
What's that?
Active after asset management.
Okay. Okay. Your Worship, Council, thank you very much for your time this afternoon, and a couple of departments behind me that I've bumped down the schedule due to a conflict at three, thank you very much. I hopefully am not a perturbing IT, a little wary of that, but anyway. Oop, yes. Infrastructure and Asset Management, manager of myself, we have a GIS specialist, Stephen Dickey, and there is a GIS technician that was approved in this current budget that's yet to be filled. There is another, the utility department has a GIS technician within themselves as well. We've heard other departments talking about what their, that their asset GIS needs are. Hopefully, the GIS section will become sort of a central location for the city, that departments will provide us information, and we'll provide it back to them, whether GIS techs are in individual departments or within the section, the city can determine as we go forward. What we're doing is documenting the assets of the city, primarily, you know, what the asset is, a piece of pipe, municipal building, swing set, that sort of thing, where it is that we can map out and easily show, a lot of people are visual, and that is the GIS, the graphical information, that's part of it. Type where it is, its current condition, and original cost, if we can know it, obviously its replacement cost and expected life, that, and some other information, go forward to helping answer questions about where things are, when they need to be renewed, what is the best economic methodology we can renew it, can we renew various things without having to increase our tax rate in the future, and all the questions you folks are dealing with in the budget and day to day. Our achievements, we have, a year, two years ago, purchased a new GIS platform in the city. Former employee sort of took that software out of the box and got it set up before they left us for other employment and family opportunities. Our new GIS specialist has been continuing on with that and migrating a lot of our data that we had over to it, and able to, from some of the aerial views that we purchase in the city, able to create some more geolocated information, street lines, sidewalks, that sort of thing. We have seen this increase in our GIS staff. GIS is, you know, it's a, like any computer product, a very valuable tool, multi-capable, and you do need people to run them. So increasing that GIS staff, which generally was just a person in the utility, theoretically looking after just their own interests, to now having two, three, four in the city is great, and as we've indicated, as more departments provide information and seek information, there may be, like other departments, a need for growth there. We've been gathering some historical records from departments to create whatever base we have, and some of that is, you know, various people, they have a map, but we have to digitize stuff, or they just have a list, and it's at the corner of X and Y, we have to put that in the computer, but create that base layer, and have also done a little bit of getting out into the field and collecting any missing data, or verifying things that we might have questions about. Challenges, it is that data is going to be king with GIS, and we need to gather it all. It's going to be an iterative process, we will go down the street and collect five different factors today, and then have to go back in a couple of years, and probably two or three things we wish we would have gotten the first time, but like I say, going to, any of your asset management plans are going to be iterative, something that you have to keep coming back to. Another challenge I foresee is going to be keeping our data current. If we have gone out and figured out where all the benches are on the street, if Public Works or Recreation or somebody's going to move a bench or change a bench, you need to be notified, or else your data is now out of date. And some of that is going to be probably moving some technical abilities out into the field, i.e. the employee's not coming back with a piece of paper that this is what I did. Hopefully, they can be out in the field with a tablet or a smartphone, and I'm not the tech person, but the technology we know is growing day by day, but getting some of that technology out into the field, having it available for the staff, and the staff knowing how to use it, and using it well. Another challenge... Another challenge, uh, is, you know, for some of our older data, particularly pipes underground for fifty, sixty, seventy-five years. We don't know how long underground. Uh, maybe we can get a camera down there and figure out its condition. But, uh, what's its age? And generally, sometimes age and condition will be aligned. We don't know some of those things. But, um, obviously, we'll, we'll do our best to figure out what we can from the past. And as we get good at everything we do today documenting, then those in the future will have all that information. And hopefully, leave the, leave it in a better, better way than we had found it. Um, another challenge I see is just, there's various access classes. Um, how are we going to prioritize our time to those? And I don't come from the financial side, but at the end of the day, we are going to have an asset management plan for storm, uh, well, I'll keep on the corporate side for stormwater. And an asset management plan for parks. They're both probably going to be underfunded. Um, and talk about how much more money you need to put in. And you folks are going to have to make that difficult decision of, is it fifty-fifty that the pain is spread? Or is there something that, uh, needs more, uh, attention than the other right at this point in time? Um, excuse me, doing two things. Our programs and service levels. Uh, when I see that service levels, and I've heard the word discussed around here a few times already, uh, this morning, early this afternoon. I don't know that we have a whole lot of documented service levels here in the city. That's something that we can show anybody on a piece of paper that has metrics that we can go out and measure and say, we are achieving it or we're not achieving it. We've all got this gut feeling that, uh, not to pick on anything, but streets, uh, you know, we need more money in streets. But I think City of Charlottetown has done very well with our streets. And, uh, sure, come spring, we'll get the pothole story here and there, but things are good. Question is, how much better do we want them? Or how much, if we don't, uh, fund as much, how much do we expect that level of service to go down? But, um, that's, uh, we're going to get into goals. I don't know whether I repeat it myself or not. But levels of service, we need to sort of define what those metrics are and get them on a piece of paper. So that we're good at, uh, at saying, uh, what it is. And, and then can all agree that it meets or it doesn't, and my interpretation is different than somebody else's. Um, An important part of the asset management is, uh, to determine if the assets are at those desired levels. So like I say, uh, need to set what level we want, and then we can say whether we need to continue to work towards it or whether we've achieved it. Um, More on the level of service there, and then improving and expanding our major asset classes is ongoing work, uh, that we hopefully will be, or that we will be continuing to do. Um, and again, some of the, the background I come from with Public Works and linear assets like pipe, uh, very straightforward. Municipal buildings, I may shy away from a little bit because it's just a, a different beast. Um, I and we need to constantly, uh, think about the fact that it's, it's big stuff. But just reading the elephant one bite at a time, and, uh, every step forward's an improvement. Um, therefore, uh, some of the departmental priorities, um, I'm going to need to motivate myself, or not motivate myself. But I'm going to need to push forward and engage with council more, um, talk about these level of service and have discussions about, uh, what we can get consensus on. Um, as I indicated a little earlier, we've got some, uh, equipment out there for field data collection. Um, need to get some staff very comfortable with that so that we can run out and grab anything at any point in time that somebody may, uh, think they need information really quickly on. Um, the digitizing inspections, that comes from our, uh, our specialist. Uh, and it's just the fact that when staff are collecting data, it's in the best form possible so that he can get it into that, uh, GIS system. Um, ultimately, it's been talked about for many years. But, uh, maybe, uh, we can hopefully again push forward on the implementation, uh, of a work management program for the City of Charlottetown. And again, that is, uh, sort of a ticket so that staff know what they're going out to do. And digitally reporting back that it's been done, um, and then trackable. When, you know, I know I did it, but I don't know if I did it three weeks ago, or seven weeks ago, or three years ago, or seven years ago. Um, but if we can get in a digital management program, uh, that will help us search. More computer, more hardware, more staff that it is going to take to, to run it. Right now, yes, somebody goes out and does the job and they come back. But when we need to do an extra hour or two of documentation, it either takes away from the work. Or generally requires another staff person with their technical or special, uh, skills in the work management system. And then also, um, as we grow our GIS layer, uh, layers, we can roll those out for public view. That's probably something that we need to try and, uh, or do need to put a focus on in the next year. Show the public what it is we're doing. Uh, another municipality, I heard, you know, say what you do, do what you say, show people. And maybe it's sometimes that will, uh, through a GIS system, be able to take some of the weight off councillors. If the technically, uh, proficient people know where they can go on our website and Google, where's the nearest park? Or how many parks have swings, or whatever question they might have. Um, doesn't have to come to a councillor, doesn't have to come to a department, doesn't have to go back through the chain. Uh, very quick, uh, hopefully concise. If there's any questions, Your Worship.
Any questions? Frank? I'm sorry, thinking Frank now. I got Frank in the mind, I got Jessica in the mind. Paul?
Yes, Your Worship.
When I go to the future land use map that's on our website, is that something you oversee as an asset manager?
Uh, that would currently be there through the planning department.
Okay.
Um, and it's, uh, generally, I think I know what you're talking about. A zoning map that they have created and, and posted. Um, again, as we get better with technology, we need to integrate all of our departments together. So that I'm a little more aware of what planning's done and planning knows what we've done. And maybe it's something, if it's out of date, it's something that automatically updates to midnight every month or every week, or something like that.
Yeah. And so over the last three to four years, we've been, um, working through our water and wastewater utility. UCC is installing a fiber optic, uh, network. Is that something that goes through asset, asset managing, management, or does that go through where?
Uh, that has been a utility-driven and overseen project to this point in time.
Okay. So we, will we have it on file after?
Oh, oh, uh, yes, yeah. And, and that's where I talk about, uh, um, you know, the, the asset itself. I thought you were, excuse me, uh, talking about the, the benefit of it. Um, yes, that's where I say, when departments do something, uh, put a fiber optic underground, or put a new swing set, or a new park bench, or new stop sign, or whatever. We need to get to the point where that is filtered through to the GIS asset management department. Will put it in, well, to the asset management department, will put it into the GIS, and then it can be seen by everybody. So the utilities operating a, a fiber optic cable, but when Recreation wants to put in a new swing set, they Google and, not Google, they, they look on our GIS. And they see, oh, there's a fiber optic cable in that area. I shouldn't dig too deep, or I should move to the side, or I should go and talk to people and ask them questions.
So that will be submitted to you as a GIS, but to get it captured by a GPS?
Yeah, and my understanding, Your Worship, is that a lot of that information, it, it hasn't been uploaded into our GIS. But the, the data is out there on somebody else's laptop or whatever. There just needs to be a little more work to.
It's about thirty kilometers of infrastructure with the G, uh, fiber optics, so, yeah. We're following it. Okay.
And we try to work with other, uh, utilities in the city. If, well, whatever information they will share, we don't guarantee their information. And sometimes they're, they're shy to give it to us, but you know, we do have a, a district heat layer that internally we can look at. Uh, some layers from Maritime Electric, uh, need to talk to telecoms and, and other people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. So is it, uh, our next presenter is IT? Is it? You can't, you can't, no, but just be.
Uh, just to sum that up, Your Worship, I'm, I'm actually surprised that there's not a lot of budget demands out of asset management. Asset management are kind of like the hidden away in the municipality heroes, who are building our data for open data systems in the future, which become like the public interface. So I just wanted to highlight that. It's really important work that they're doing, but they're not public facings. They don't get a lot of attention. So I just want to say they're doing a great job and thank the team. Thank you.
They're in the room down in the basement.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's next? Okay. Is it? Okay, so Mr. Long? Wayne?
Thank you, Your Worship. There you go. Thank you, uh, for this opportunity. It's, um, I feel also it's a great exercise and it's nice to be here amongst, uh, my colleagues and with council, uh, for the day. And, um, I see great value in this, um, this process. So, um, our team, uh, in Economic Development, Tourism and Culture, um, advances strategic objectives in the economic tourism and cultural sectors. As you're well aware, we drive inclusive economic growth, help shape the visitor experience, enhance resident quality of life, civic pride, and contribute to building community capital. Um, I'd also add here that, um, uh, we're somewhat unique in, in many ways. Um, there are a number, number of municipalities across the country and beyond that would have in-house departments such as this. But there's also a number of destinations that would have external bodies such as economic development and tourism agencies that operate at arm's length outside of the municipality. With the municipality being a, a core funding, um, partner. So I just share that as a, as a bit of an FYI on the side. Uh, our team is comprised of, uh, four, um, full-time staff, one contract staff, and four seasonal staff. Um, obviously, we have, uh, manager of the department and acting manager. We have a, uh, events and management tourism officer, a civic engagement and events coordinator, a cultural and economic coordinator, and civic events and tourism assistant. Which is a contract position for eight months of the year. And then we have four staffers who work seasonally in the visitor information center located here in City Hall. In our department, partnerships are key. It doesn't matter what we're, uh, where we have our hands or what we're working on. Partnerships are, are highly paramount to our success. Um, we constantly have to be enhancing and validating our, um, value proposition, um, as well as our destination innovation. So that's an ongoing exercise for us. Uh, we're guided by a number of strategies within our team. Uh, we may be small, but we need, we have to be mighty if we want to compete. And then finally, I would say, um, that we're proud of our many successes and how, um, how we've operated over the years. We've often been referred to as the best practices by a number of municipalities. Uh, perhaps we get as many as ten, uh, calls in the run of a year with respect to, to how we operate and succeed. Also, we get, uh, a number of invitations to present at national conventions, regional conventions, and/or to educational institutions. Um, sorry about that. What we do, um, we work collaboratively with partners, as I indicated a few minutes ago, to drive business attraction, retention and growth. We negotiate and secure tourism and driving events and products. Uh, we deliver community-focused projects and events and advance cultural, um, efforts. You'll note here, um, at the top of each page, we have images. I just want to allude to those just quickly. You may be wondering why we have all these different images. These images were created by a local artist and they form, uh, a part of the cultural art walk map. So, uh, we thought that we would expose those to give the artists some, uh, exposure. From a growth and attraction, uh, perspective, um, we compete heavily in the events and product bid development, uh, area. Which takes up an extraordinary amount of time and elevated lift on behalf of our team. Uh, business and tourism attraction missions are key to a lot of our success in participating with other, uh, partners. And increasing investment, um, through the use of data and sector strengths, which we rely heavily on to. And also leaning into strategies and working with partners, uh, such as, um, Innovation PEI as an example. Uh, visitor services, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we operate, uh, seasonally here at, uh, Tourism Visitor Information Center at City Hall. Uh, from a community perspective, we foster community growth on an ongoing basis. We have the power to drive the well-being of society at large, uh, which is highly important to a destination through civic celebrations. These are some of the many events that are happening. I would encourage everyone tonight to participate, uh, in the city's Civic Tree Lighting Ceremony. Um, as well as tomorrow, the city's Civic Christmas Parade. There's two good examples that I could refer to. Uh, tree lighting tonight is at six-thirty, the parade is at five P.M. tomorrow. Uh, Communities in Bloom Program and Make Our Hometown Beautiful Program is a great, uh, community engagement initiative. But also enhancement, beautification of our destination as a whole. And newcomer engagement, engagement is also a, a strength that we need to lean in heavily as we continue to grow, uh, population for newcomer, um, newcomers moving to our destination. From a hosting perspective, uh, sport tourism, annual events and attracted events, uh, are, are a strong key in this particular, particular area. And manager, management of internal, uh, event logistic teams. So our, uh, our team, uh, coordinates all the city's efforts with respect to, uh, organizing and getting permissions, permits, et cetera, to execute an event in, here in, in Charlottetown. Uh, which is a great, uh, uplift and effort on behalf of, uh, the municipality. The public art and cultural, uh, development, um, we develop public art projects, lead efforts to maximize, uh, economic impact. Whether that through be, be through policy development, grants and partnerships. And as the capital city, um, and the cultural hub center for the province, it's, it's important that we lead by example and be out front, um, setting the pace, um, for the province. Uh, when I say the province, I mean the province as a whole, not the level of, um, the level of government. Municipal leadership, uh, we work, uh, with policy development, uh, grants which are approved through, through council and elevated by staff. Uh, V I K, this is Value in Kind, uh, Services in Kind. The municipality, um, approves a number of, of Value in Kind opportunities. And, uh, enhancing incentive programs. We're targeted, uh, through sector development and partnership and relationship, uh, building. Um, which will allow us to do things like advancing reconciliation, fostering, uh, connections, um, with under-celebrated communities. Um, and seeking, uh, groups. And then municipal protocols, um, and events such as HMC, uh, Charlottetown, uh, Freedom of the City is a regional event that had happened. Our achievements, I'll just kind of, uh, push through these quickly. Uh, we relaunched economic development efforts through missions, marketing tools, and partner engagement and data collection. We maintained our number one tourism ranking for destinations with a population of fifty thousand and under through the Canadian Sport Hosting Index. Uh, renewed our sport tourism strategy through twenty-three through twenty-six, and contributed to the development of Tourism PEI's new, uh, seasonal expansion strategy. Embracing the seasons, uh, which drives winter and shoulder tourism, uh, efforts. It was recently unveiled. Uh, we invested through the support of council, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in grant funding to thirty-five-plus cultural organizations and events. Which created jobs, downtown vibrancy, and improved the well-being of the community as a whole. We're the recipient of a half a million dollars in external grants for economic and tourism activities, uh, with the majority being through a lot of other levels of government. Successfully hosted ninety-plus, uh, partnership events, um, this year, generating upwards of two-hundred-million dollars in economic impact. You might wonder why it's at that level. It's because of the Canada Games being hosted. You'll hear soon enough, uh, how, uh, how valuable that was to the province and to the capital city in the near future. Uh, in addition to the games, we also hosted many events throughout the year. But in a couple of other signature events are the U Sportsmen's National Hockey Championship, which Counselor Beck is quite familiar with. And we're recently coming off a very successful, uh, U-seventeen World Hockey Challenge, which put over forty-four thousand, uh, bums in seats in both Charlottetown and in Summerside. Uh, I'm also pleased to announce that we, or, or, alert you that we just announced the return of the Jack Frost Children's Winter Fest. Uh, you'll hear more about that in the coming, uh, days ahead. Uh, we maintain a ninety percent sex, success rate in the event bidding and attraction efforts. In partnership with meetings and conventions, PEI successfully attracted and hosted a hundred-and-twelve meetings and conventions, generating twenty-one-point-two-million-dollar economic impact. Launched a refreshed newcomer event here at City Hall, demonstrating the city's support and commitment to the newcomer community. Executed six civic events at a value of two-hundred-and-twenty, uh, thousand dollars, again through the support of council. Including a feature of three remote, uh, cities, the National CBC broadcast, uh, here in PEI. One of the things I'll mention here, uh, quickly is that, uh, we used a barge this past year. We will be coming to council for support to use the barge on an annual basis, uh, for safety reasons, both police and fire. Uh, we'll tell you or speak to that in the, the days and weeks ahead. We'll tell you or speak to that in the days and weeks ahead. There's also being more sustainable, being respectful of the assets we have in Victoria Park and not damaging them, so there's a whole, whole number of good reasons there. We created the city's first full-time permanent cultural position, again with the support of council, through recommendations in the new arts and cultural strategy, as well as in the public art plan. Continue to generate positive and ongoing media coverage for the corporation. And this year, there was 89 cruise ship visits, accounting for 176-plus thousand visitors with a direct impact of $18.2 million. Of course, there's, with successes, there's always challenges like every department faces. Some of those challenges for our department and team are, we need for the increase of sustainable funding to succeed in a highly competitive growth and attraction marketplace. More than ever, especially coming out of the pandemic, economic development, attraction, tourism, attraction, cultural efforts are competing in a very, very competitive marketplace. We're more, we need to be more competitive than ever during a time when costs are rising and hosting fees, especially on the tourism side and product development side, are elevating and climbing like they've never have before. We need, have a need for better understanding and support of the events sector in the post-pandemic world in a marketplace where there's limited corporate dollars. There's data out there that the world rise to deliver events has risen between 15 to 30% in terms of budgeting and costs associated with event delivery, something that we're going to have to think about during the budget process, especially for direct delivery events like civic celebrations. We have a need for increased in sustainable arts and cultural funding that encourages sector growth and elevates talent retention and expands the capacity for innovation. It's, this is one of the inclusive growth pillars for us under the, under the new strategic plan, and like tourism, cultural has been hit hard during the pandemic. Single intake, operating budget timelines and processes do not always align with grant planning recipients. If we look at best practices across the country, especially within other levels of government, they do a number of intakes throughout the year. They also create an opportunity for buckets of, of investment from, of, from government, so it allows evaluations of grant requests to be considered in real time, not just at one wind take during, during a budget process. Staff capacity challenges in the corporation limit our ability to properly execute and promote civic events. So you heard Janice speak earlier to the challenges that communications faces. They're very busy. They receive an immense amount of requests on an annual basis, and the reaction required to, to deal with each one of those is, is very time-consuming. So we, we need more support with respect to promoting our events, so we would do that through contract work on the, on the side in collaboration with our communications department. And also the delivery of civic events on the ground. There was a time, and listen up council, there was a time when council showed up to a good majority of civic events to lend a hand and be on the front line, supporting the city, good public relations, interacting with the community. And we all realize that there's far more competition for your time than ever before. We will be looking for community, some contract positions in order for us to execute those events, or we will not be able to maintain them at the level required where we need to be successful. So something to consider moving, moving forward. And then finally, the need for action and support on diversity, equity, inclusion, and Indigenous reconciliation. We have a need for stronger internal policies and resources, and resources related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as broad-based DEI training. Staff across the corporation have identified the need for guidance and protocols and best practices for consulting with Indigenous communities, implying reconciliation lens and relevant municipal activities, and also the need and support for resources to put towards DEI and reconciliation initiatives. The other couple of items that I would mention under our challenges is that more than ever, artificial intelligence, AI, is taking the world over and it's moving fast in real time, and if we don't move with it and adapt, we'll be left behind. It's, it's a moving message and trend right across the world, no matter where you are with respect to presentations and trends and movement. It's something that we need to consider as a corporation, not only in our area, it'll be broadly to a number of areas within the, the city as a whole. And earned media, especially around what we do in our department, I think Jessica referenced it within the environment sustainability as well, is king. It's important that we work harder than ever to earn media coverage, which in turn illuminates our message of positivity across the community and gets the word out there what's happening with respect to the corporation. Our department is not necessarily like every other department with respect to programs and service levels, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of quick items. The execution of the municipality's annual events and celebrations. I talked a few minutes ago about the increase in order to execute. These events are rising between, somewhere between 15 to 30%. And then the maintaining and operating visitor information center from April through to The top five priorities for our department currently is finalizing our departmental structure. We've been working closely with senior management and HR team to best structure our department. Some of that activity has already happened, and I believe that we're closing in on finalizing that, that process. Once this happens, it'll allow us to be more strategic and be successful in advancing our objectives and goals as a corporation. Create and renew key departmental strategies, including an economic development strategy and festivals and event strategy, council approved in the last budget cycle, funding to create an economic development strategy. It's important that we focus on, on that moving forward. It just can't be rushed into it, needs to be rolled out properly. Once the new director arrives, it'll also be an opportunity for them to be a part of the process. And then the festivals and event strategy is an ongoing strategy we have. It'll just be up for renewal in the near future. It's very important that we act on our commitment to development, our reconciliation roadmap. Reconciliation is a commitment within the strategic plan, as council is aware, and key to the inclusion economic growth pillar. Though the city has made small gains in this area, a reconciliation roadmap may be developed in close collaboration with local Indigenous organizations. The roadmap will need to provide a framework for the municipality for moving forward together with the Indigenous partners and a pathway towards reconciliation. And it'll provide a clear approach and benchmark to help guide us in the program and progress with guidance and protocols and best practices for consultation and collaboration. Establishing funding programs for cultural events, I talked about that a few minutes ago. We need to align better with best practices that are happening across the country from a, from a grants program perspective. Various strategies to address these priority areas, pots of funding versus current processes would be more valuable and strategic on behalf of the corporation and leading into two intakes perhaps, perhaps annually as we move into the, the future. So that's a quick overview of our department. Thank you for bearing with me. I'm operating in a different time zone and had a lengthy flight yesterday internationally and happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon, do you want to suggest?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Mr. Long, for your report. It shows all the hard work and commitment that yourself and your staff are, are doing for the benefits of the city. Your hats off to you all, I guess, and showing the activity, some of the stuff that you guys are doing, Christmas activities, parades, meetings, conventions, some of the things that you didn't mention there. So your, your team is working hard to invite the events and festivals to the city, and no, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Beck and Counselor Matar.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Wayne. I just wanted to comment on, back in 1st of October, your worship, you and I, and the deputy mayor was actually at some of the sessions as well for the Canadian Capital Cities Organization.
Canadian Capital Cities Conference.
Conference that we hosted here. And something that struck me, Wayne moderated a session with various people from the sector, Heidi Zinn from Discover Charlatown, Brody O'Keefe from the province, Ben Murphy from the private sector. And what struck me about that was the level of, kind of what you were talking to at the start, Wayne, about relationships and how relationships is key to driving this economic, cultural development and having an understanding of the marketplace and the competitive nature of everything and being at the forefront of event attraction and stuff like that. And I guess what really struck me was that, and I guess it kind of speaks to one of the benefits of being small, small city, smaller city, smaller province, is that ability to work in a connected manner. And that was really something that I think is a strength that we have going, and hopefully we can continue to build in those relationships and use them to help drive further cultural and economic development here, and not only in Charlatown, but in the island abroad. Because there is a real, although we are focused on what we're doing here in town, there is really a connect, a connectedness right across the island. And the big takeaway for me from that session was that there is an interest in driving it further, using kind of Charlatown as the focal point, but using other benefits around it. So I was really impressed by that, and I hope that continues to go on and keep driving it forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Wayne, for your presentation. My question is really just around, when I look at the priorities about development and action plans, I, is that encompassing the activities, attracting major events to Charlatown? And what does that kind of runway look like in the sense of the number of things that you're aiming towards, bringing, you know, we've seen, you've highlighted some of the activities that have occurred up to this point, but what, what does our future look like? And what, how far out do you look typically? One, two, three years? And I know a lot of that takes a lot of planning and execution, but when we're looking at it from a priority perspective, are we looking a couple of years out? And what could, what could the residents of Charlatown look forward to or expect from an event perspective?
Through yourself, your worship, to the counselor. It's a good, good question, Counselor Matar. With respect to economic development efforts and specifically on the tourism, community engagement side, I believe that's what you're speaking to more. Business attraction is at, you know, typically a minimum of at least five years out. There's a bid rotation amongst organizations who hold the rights to whatever it is, if it's an event, if it's a product, et cetera. So you need to be strategically working that far out. We action plan based on the many strategies that we have internally and/or with our partners. So as I indicated, and Counselor Beck spoke to a minute ago, partnerships are paramount in our efforts in order to secure activity. With respect to the number of activities or the kind of activities, we're always to market looking where we can get our best KPIs or ROI return with respect to the destination. Not only are we driving the sport tourism file directly internally, which is one of the most valuable sectors in the country right now on the event hosting side, but we're also working with our partners at meetings and conventions, PEI at meetings and conventions. We're also working with respect to attracting programs and initiatives that may be unique in nature. So I can't, I couldn't name all of them today because it may have an impact in some of the bids that are to, to market. However, I can, can say that there's a number of sport tourism initiatives, meetings and conventions. We'll continue to work with the port on the attraction of, of cruise ships. At the end of the day, our, our future seems to be bright and we're moving in a positive direction. We've had great success to date. We've won a number of accolades and awards and high-profile rankings for a small community, and we're often, as I indicate, looked at as the best practices. So we'll continue to lean in hard. We will continue to prospect, which is highly important, to know what's in the marketplace and chase down leads and try to make our city vibrant.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Wayne, for that report and having worked with you since I basically was elected off and on on, on certain committees. I really understand your role in it and being at a few conferences with you and a few meetings. You do a fantastic job selling the city and things along that line, so I'm very happy with the way everything's going. Thank you.
So Wayne, if I could just wrap up, look, you know, the year started off with the Canada Games, 2023, and U Sports, National Hockey Tournament, unbelievable. And then, of course, there was the Moonlight Bazaar, which was a huge, huge success. And then to end it off with the World U-17 Hockey Challenge. It's been a great year, and then I'm looking forward for the ECMA in the spring. And Wayne, that's, that's all, the tourism cultural development has been superb, and I know there's lots of other ideas that you're working on. Now, you're over to Scotland for economic development, and that's an area that we have to, you know, it's been in limbo since Ronnie Atkinson left us because he moved on to retirement. Any update on where we're looking at working with, like, say, PEI Bioalliance, or C A D C, or Innovation Prince Eberdalen? Can you give us just a glimpse of what the future may look like, year one, year two?
Yeah. Thank you for your question, your worship. There's a couple of things to consider here. One is we, we will be moving forward with a new strategic plan with respect to economic development. So that'll be a guiding tool for the corporation and how we attract and, and work more within that particular space. A couple of things that I would, would remind counsel of is that a high percentage of this significant economic development that happens in the capital city happens through Innovation PEI. And we essentially support their efforts and ride along with them. It's because of the infrastructure and access to other economic assets that we have here in the capital city. We work closely with the many other groups. There's a number of agencies and groups doing economic development in Charlatown. We're a small city, but Downtown Charlatown, Inc. is doing economic development. The Chamber's playing in the space, the port is very active, the airport, a C A D C. So it's, again, it's all about partnerships at the end of the day. A lot of our economic development to date, in my short time in the role, has been working with businesses who are looking for space, mostly in and around the downtown core, helping businesses, leading them to the planning department where they need to get permits or other material, providing data which is mined within our department to help them make firm and strategic decisions with respect to their organization. So there is a number of things going on. You don't always see it at surface level. It's, a lot of it happens behind the scene. But what I'm most looking forward to is our new strategy around economic development. Any good opportunity to momentum propel forward is driven by strategic strategy. It'll help you to better evaluate your KPIs and your ROI, and it'll help guide you and not just be kind of on the run. It has you focused, narrowed in, and it'll only help the municipality gain momentum moving forward.
And just to go back to what Counselor Beck talked about, smallness has some great qualities and assets to it. I know we have Alex McBain that has, I believe, Island Capital Ventures that is out looking for new ventures to come to Prince Eberdalen. You have Jason Absen from, Jason Aspen from AKA Aspen Camp Associates. So lots of connector, connections there, so we really need a, I, I hope the, the, the plan or the five-year, two-year, two-year, five-year plan has, you know, linking up with these other partners, stakeholders, and I'm sure that you're looking at that. The last is about something that I was given to when I arrived here in 2018, the Multi-U Sports Entertainment Center. That's, keeps popping, it, it, it keeps popping up any, is it on the radar or is it just being parked from your standpoint?
As you're aware, your worship, council engaged the services of a highly recognized consultant and who's executed a couple of reports for council over the years. Some of that happened through the pandemic. The East Link Center is an important venue with respect to market share in the economic development space, especially specifically from a sport and entertainment value. Council has committed good investment into that venue to do some infrastructure enhancements, as we all well know, leading into the Canada Games. There's definitely more work that has to be. There's definitely more work that has to be done, but they are bridges. They're bridges that will get us to a number of years down the road where we can better focus on and validate the reasons why we need a new sport and entertainment centre. I would not skew that by speaking on behalf of council, but the East Link Centre is in its mid-30 years now, and as you well know, as infrastructure ages, comes a greater cost and investment in order to, to maintain those. We have made great strides with respect to that venue. All of the events that you mentioned have happened in that specific venue itself. We're fortunate to have a partnership with the province on, on that and have not only the rene side but the trade center side as well. So at our next economic development meeting, we do have an agenda item related to this, and our committee will be discussing and report back to council as we move forward.
Councillor McClair.
Yeah, and just on the, am I right in, I don't know, I'd heard in the discussion or comments, and maybe, maybe not, you know, found it, but on the Canada Games, is there some kind of encompassing report that's gonna, that's gonna come and that we'll be able to see or hear? And I guess that, well, if it is, you're shaking your head, so I assume there is something coming, and it'll speak to a number of things, not the least of which will be financial. And can you just kind of share your comments and what you expect from that report? Thank you.
Through yourself, your worship, to councillor McClair. Good question. At our last committee meeting, we had this very discussion. We've made an official request to the Canada Games Host Society to make a presentation to the Economic Development Committee, which would focus on the financials of the hosting of the games, focus on the, the dreams and champions, legacy funds, how those funds will be used, and how those, the evaluations and types of applications that would be received. And finally, Sport Tourism Canada measured the economic impact of the Canada Games, which will be substantial when the numbers released. So those three items will be addressed by the Canada Games Host Society to the city early in the new year.
Good. Do you want to sum up there, CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Thank you, your worship. So I think a lot of it was, was status questions more than anything, but congratulations on the great work you've, you've done and the team. The simplest action was continue to build the great relationships across the island to drive economic development further. And then the other one I heard with some of the questions is perhaps a budget priority is really just getting this economic development strategy done?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. Sum it up, good?
Great.
Okay. Councillor McCabe, good, we'll move on. Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you very much. Have a great weekend. We're back here tomorrow. Who's next? Dr. Eleanor? Oh, IT. IT, IT's back. Oh, we have to get in. They've been here all day. And finance. Oh, Eleanor, do you want to take a quick break or do you want to just keep moving? Do you want a quick break?
If we break, I'm not breaking.
You could? If you wish to go for a break, just, yeah. Yeah, that's perfect.
All right, IT. So who we are, information technology is responsible for providing and maintaining technology. IT is used as a force multiplier within municipalities, providing services that allow staff to more efficiently complete tasks. What we do, IT has a primary focus to provide and maintain technology. Looking at the infographic on the side, IT can be divided into six categories. Our IT department is really only focused on three of these. That would be IT security, infrastructure, and technical support. So infrastructure covers the maintenance of infrastructure, licensing and vendor relationships, performing updates, backing up data, and ensuring compliance with quality standards. Technical support covers the installation of software, printers and devices, troubleshooting issues, providing guidance, and repairing or replacing hardware. Security covers the assessment of potential threats and ensuring compliance with security standards. IT training is something I'd love for us to be able to do. We just don't have the capacity to do so at the moment. And ITSM, IT Service Management, is more of a long-term planning. Again, something I'd love for us to be able to do, but we just don't have the capacity at the moment. Oh, and I guess the development piece, that's software development, that's not something that I would ever see our IT department needing to do. It's just in there for some larger IT departments. Our achievements, looking at the infographic on the right, so this covers the minimum security requirements for a municipality, providing the level of service that the city had in 2019. So back in 2019, the city had an estimated 20% of these minimum requirements. Over the last three to four years, a lot of progress has been made, and we now have an estimated 80 to 90% of those minimum requirements. With that said, the city's still in critical condition and with a large amount of work left to be completed. In 2019, almost all of our infrastructure was at or beyond end of life. So the term end of life in our field typically means one of two things. So for hardware, replacement parts can no longer be easily found. Or for software, updates are no longer being developed, which leads to security holes. By 2022, most end-of-life infrastructure was replaced or modernized. We've focused on staff service levels, so that's the service level that we provide to the city staff. This was an issue in 2019. A lot of staff would wait until they were unable to function before calling for IT help. Staff are not as hesitant to reach out to us now, and they're able to have most issues resolved quickly. We've also focused on corporate security. Some major security issues, issues were found and resolved. Some good examples, all users in the city had local administrative rights. This is a huge security risk, giving malicious software instant access to vital parts of computers and much more freedom to spread across our network. We also found that the firewall rules were put in place with a focus on ease of access. So I'll use a bank vault as an analogy. You don't want to install, install a secure bank vault, store items in the vault of, in the vault that are of value, and then provide the keys to the vault to members of the public. It just doesn't make much sense. So some of the rules in place on our firewall were open to that level. Our challenges, we continue to see a backlog of policy, infrastructure, and maintenance issues from having no IT department. End-of-life tech, end-of-life infrastructure pieces have been updated, but the city continues to be many years behind in technology. There's been continued growth of malicious attacks across the world. The city's been lucky to avoid a serious attack when we were most vulnerable. Even with all the progress we've made, the city continues to be at great risk. Cyber insurance, this insurance exists to help us in case of an attack, but we're still approximately one year from meeting the minimum requirements for this coverage. Because we don't meet these minimum requirements, we have reduced coverage in the event of an attack. So we can see our deductibles as much as doubled, and on top of that, 50% reduction in payouts. The remainder of our challenges revolve around staffing level. If we look at police services, the IT needs are much greater than the typical office worker. Our IT staffing level is, is not sufficient to provide the services required for the police. There've been multiple obligations for data standards that we have failed to meet and we must resolve. The city currently has an IT staffing ratio of about 90 to 1, so that's one IT staff for every 90 users, which is below the municipal Atlantic Canada average of 50 to 1, and it's far below the ratio required to excel in technology, with many Atlantic Canadian municipalities having a 30 to 1 ratio. As IT service levels have risen, IT has reached a point where it's no longer possible to complete projects during what we call downtime between calls. So the number of service calls is enough to keep staff tied up all day. This goes back to a point I made earlier where staff were originally hesitant to reach out to IT for assistance. Back then, I could complete a 40-hour project over the course of two to three weeks, and now it takes two to three months to complete a similar project. It's great that staff are now coming to IT more often, but it does mean that we can no longer work on projects without interruption. Programs and service levels, IT will continue to focus on staff service levels, providing quick response to staff helps reduce downtime. IT will continue to focus on infrastructure replacement as we finalize a five-year infrastructure replacement cycle. We're aiming to move security up on the priority list, but doing so may require a shift of focus away from staff service levels. This would decrease efficiency of staff across the corporation as they would see increased wait times to fix computer issues. Fortunately, most of the security-related tools and programs are in place already but are not being effectively utilized, monitored, or maintained. Focus on security includes the labor cost of managing these tools and programs. Some pieces that are missing include risk management, compliance management, security policy implementations, daily, weekly, and monthly log and report scanning, and network scanning. All of these require large investments of time to manage and maintain. Top five priorities, one of the top priorities for the coming year is an asset management and work order management platform. Paul spoke to one he called City Works that is a, a top candidate for this. These platforms build upon a good GIS base, GIS being geographical and information systems. And these could not be moved, this asset management platform could not be moved forward until that base was in place. So this is primarily an operational project with a focus on, I think, oh, no, that's the right page, a focus on digitizing work order workflows. Digitization of these workflows can allow for citizen engagement. For example, a citizen may report a pothole using the city's website, automatically creating a work order, which includes a notification for the citizen upon completion. So this is just a mock-up of what I, what it might look like if security, if, sorry. This is just a mock-up of what it might look like if Charlestown had a service like this in place. So this is what we call an issue reporting tool. Citizens can select a location on the map, then select from a list of options to report. This list would be curated by city staff based on the types of services that we provide to citizens. After reporting the issue, information will flow through to staff who can take appropriate actions. The person reporting can then get an update when the issue is resolved, and anyone who would prefer to call in an issue may continue to do so, and the staff person who takes the call would input the information into the system instead. Department priorities, IT is prioritizing security-first procedures. So this shift is done by reallocating IT resources, preferably with increased staffing levels to prevent sacrificing staff service levels. This shift will reduce the chance of a major cyber attack and reduce the damage caused by a major cyber attack. IT will also continue to work on capital projects to modernize services and increase efficiency. IT will continue to work on aging infrastructure replacements, and IT will continue to find redundant services and reduce operating costs for services.
I think Mr. Matar, councillor Matar, has a question or a comment?
Comment, yeah. Just thank you, Rory, for your presentation. You know, looking at the departmental priorities, I'm, you know, happy to see that, you know, shift towards security be at the top of your list. And I think if, if you had any priority here, security and privacy should be your number one priority on top of anything here, you know, to mitigate any risk of potential loss of data or penetration into the network of the city. So in doing that, you know, you should ensure that you have good policies and practices in place and some strategies around, you know, digital services, cybersecurity, et cetera. So it's good to see that you have that focus there. So I think at the very least, that should be the main priority of this, based on your report and some of the, some of the information that I came to light here today. So that would be my advice to you. Thank you.
Coming from an IT background, you know the challenges. Any other questions? Councillor McClair?
Yeah, thank you, Rory, for, for your report. I, I know in having a brief conversation with you on the, I believe they're going to refer to it as this, is it the City Works, City Works of Client Management or Service Management Tools? Is that, have you had conversations or with other municipalities, user groups, and what, what's that feedback going to like? Thank you.
Sure. So we've talked with a few other municipalities that have similar platforms. Some of them use City Works, some of them use, some are, we'll call it more siloed solutions. So for every individual system, there may be a best-in-class solution. So if you're only looking for a work order management system, you might go with a different product. If you're only looking for an asset management system, you might go with a different product. This one is one that it kind of combines everything and integrates really well with the GIS system that we have.
Councillor McClair?
Just quick, just roughly with councillor Matar's concern and the City Works, I know there, it's on the, on the spur of the moment question, but do you have a rough, rough number, dollar number for both those as an example, what they might look like, realizing there be a range, I assume, on both?
So just, just for clarification, are you, are you asking for a price for like the City Works platform as an example? Yeah. So City Works, it would range anywhere from, say, $50,000 to $80,000 per year for a municipality of our size. So the security piece, I mean, that's, there's, it, yeah.
Yeah. And insurance. There's an insurance side to that, too, the fire, yeah, yeah. So just before you go, if, if we look at how we're going towards a paperless meetings, we have the capabilities, Wi-Fi, hardware, you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, very comfortable.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. He's leaving.
Thank you for presentation, Rory. Question I have is, maybe Justin would know better, working the IT sector with the province, but if you were to do a comparative analysis with the IT capabilities here in the city of Charlestown versus the provincial government, how would we rate, I mean, how much more advanced is the province of Prince Edward Island as compared to the city of Charlestown in terms of the IT capabilities and what senior administration has to work with, what the elected officials have to work with, you know, the province, whether it be the premier, cabinet ministers, the MLA, all the resources that are afforded to them versus the elected officials here at City Hall, as well as senior management here at City Hall? Where are we at in terms of the director scale?
I'll be honest, I, I don't know what the provincial levels are. I've been comparing most of our service levels to other municipalities across Atlantic Canada. So as far as what's provided to users, the technology level there is, is pretty comparable. Most of the issues we have are related to just the security and policies behind that. So we may not have proper policies in place to manage those assets. Those are the issues that we're looking to resolve over the coming year.
Yeah, and their firewalls are much more, they're stronger than ours because of the information they're dealing with, vital statistics, income tax, consumption. Well, not only that, it's the information they're dealing with, so, yeah. Thanks, Rory. Did you want to sum it up?
Thank you, your worship. So I, I had no action items. I just, I heard two things of the comments, which was budget priority would be security and privacy, and the other one was the client management tool, if that's what councils.
And staffing.
Oh, I'm stopping across, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Next up is, oh, our two managers, they've been waiting all day. They just want a glass of, well, no, this is the most, this is a very important department.
They're used to go first at every council meeting.
Correct, yes. Yes, David, and Donna, you're usually the first on every agenda, but today, we just wanted to keep you around.
No offense, no offense.
No offense, no offense. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. It's, it's a pleasure to be here. I'll have to admit, this is my first time going through this type of process, but, you know, I, I'm taking it all in as I go. And I'll start us off, and then hand things off to Donna for some more discussion, and back to me to conclude the presentation. So just about who we are, I know this isn't on the slide, but our department currently is comprised, split into two service areas. We have development planning and then policy planning. We have fifteen staff members total among those two sub-work groups. Within development planning, we currently have five development planners, which includes myself as development manager, two building inspectors, one front, front-of-house administrative person, and one bylaw officer who's pending, being hired at this point. And on the policy side, we have Donna, who's our manager of policy and heritage, as well as slots for two planners, one front-desk administrative person, a heritage officer, and a heritage researcher. So linking in with who we are, part of our work includes prioritizing waterfront development, expanding the waterfront's footprint and amenities to continue to enhance the attractiveness of Charlottetown as a destination, while being anticipatory of requirements related to preparation for sea level rise and related environmental considerations, as well as building opportunities for residents and visitors to experience the waterways in the city of Charlottetown, which are, which are very unique. We continue to respect, preserve, and enhance our heritage assets while also embracing the principle of adaptive reuse and the circular economy, while at the same time preserving the integrity of the 500-lot district. We also, as a team, ensure that we plan for and accommodate our future population growth, both to optimize land use and the need for additional and expanded infrastructure in future, which has been spoken to by several of our other departments. We also aim to take a whole of Charlottetown perspective on planning, which addresses environmental considerations, including density while creating a city of neighborhoods. Although Charlottetown is already a city of neighborhoods, and this goes back to amalgamation in the 1990s, we seek to enhance that city of neighborhoods, bringing residents closer to the services that they need and the lifestyle and leisure opportunities that they want, while enhancing livability, walkability, and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And lastly, we seek to work with other public and private partners, this is both public agencies, other levels of government such as the province, and our private development partners, to address innovative solutions to housing, including facilitating a streamlined regulatory and approvals process which is designed to facilitate development across Charlottetown. So linking to that, and what we do, there's a number of things that we do. We process subdivision applications. I would say we do, in speaking to some of our senior, more longstanding staff, caveat being I've, I've been here just for a couple of months at this point, we process about several dozen of these applications per year. Development and building permits, and this includes rezonings, major and minor variances, I would say, we do on the order of hundreds of these per year, but the vast majority of those are, are strictly building permits. Development agreements, we do, deal with several dozen of these per year. And inspections, building inspections, you can say we have thousands of inspections that happen throughout the year. Several inspections can be attributed to an individual permit. We also deal with land use complaints and zoning bylaw-related enforcement matters. I would say we receive at least several of these new complaints per month on an ongoing basis, and these are matters that are future, bylaw enforcement officer will, will be taking custody of personally. We also deal with short-term rental licensing, and we have several short-term rentals within the city which are currently operating, and these will be captured through the implementation of the new short-term rental bylaw which recently was adopted by council. And we also have secondary and garden suite regulation applications, and there is a great deal of potential for growth here. That would be contingent on any future changes to particularly the garden suite regulate, regulations. So I'll hand it off to Donna at this point, to speak more so to the policy and heritage side of things.
Thanks, David. So as David mentioned earlier, the department is now separated into two separate areas, and the section that I lead is policy and heritage. Specifically, we are responsible for heritage approvals, policy and programs, policy and regulation review and development. And one that is particularly known amongst the staff here and the citizens of Charlottetown is the update of the official plan and the zoning and development bylaw. We are currently in the process of restarting the update of the official plan, and councillors will hear more about that as we go along. We are also responsible for the enforcement and summary proceedings bylaw, the update of that. We are currently in the process of speaking with the legal team, who is reviewing currently the submission that was made. We also do preparation and update of specific different bylaws. Throughout the presentations today, we heard some departments talk about some bylaws that they would be updating with our assistance. We also look at affordable housing policy and program, and so far, since I've been here, I've only seen one application to go through that program. We are also going to be looking at parking minimums, and this will include removing some of the stipulations around parking for different developments so that we can reduce the requirements and free up more space for development. We'll also be looking at the patio policy, or the introduction of a patio policy, to ensure that during our summer months, when persons want to move some of their operations, that's the restaurants' operations outside, they can do that. We'll also look at waste management policy, and that I'll be working on with the Public Works Department. We also want to introduce climate-proofing development guidelines with our zoning and development bylaw. At the moment, we don't have any specific guidelines that would ensure that we look at climate mitigation and adaptation through our guidelines. We also do design and heritage guidelines, and of course, land use strategies. Some of our achievements, Dave mentioned before, sorry, that we recently adopted the STR licensing bylaw. It came into effect on November first, 2023. This took some time to get here. It was a lot of work, but we are there now. We still have some work that we need to get done to ensure that operationally, we don't have a lot of issues in terms of licensing of different operations, but we're getting there. Departmental restructuring, earlier this year, we underwent a restructuring process where the department was split down the middle, and we have two different areas, focused areas of specialization, development planning, and policy and heritage. In terms of personal staff achievements, we have five candidate RPPs in process, and we expect that as we go through this process, it will be smooth, and more persons will be able to take on more complex projects. And also, in terms of our appeals process, that more members of the department would be more involved in that. In terms of building permit activity, year-to-date, compared to October 2022 and October 2023, we've actually issued more permits based on what we have there on the chart. What you'll see is that we actually didn't collect as much permit fees this year, although we had more development permits issued. And this is because of the industrial permits that were issued last year, and they carry a higher value in terms of what they pay for fees. I think this is where I hand over to Dave, or that's me, Dave? That's me? Okay. And in terms of some of our challenges, so application volume, we've been seeing a lot of applications coming in over the past couple of years. This is probably in response to some of the housing challenges that we face here in the city, and a number of developers want to take advantage of all the different programs that are out there in terms of facilitating their developments. There's limited human resources in the department, and a number of us are in transition. I'm pretty new, Dave is new as well, and we've hired a number of new planners. And then you have some staff members that are moving on to other areas within the city. And so we have some learning curve happening, and we are all learning to adapt to a new environment, and we are all learning how the policy and procedures of the department works, and on a whole, how the policies and procedures of the city work. And so forgive us, sometimes we will make mistakes. It's not intentional. We'll get there. In terms of recruitment and turnover, there is a, there is an acute shortage of planners within Canada, and so it's hard to find planners to fill some of the positions that we still have available in the department. But the recruitment process continues, and we hope that we will get those positions filled as soon as possible. In terms of appropriate software, we do need to look at how we, how the software that we have now works. It's not something that a number of the persons in the department, even those that have been there since its inception, knows how to use, and this is something that we need to sort out in terms of moving forward. Managing developer expectations versus operational procedures, there are a number of the developers out there that expect that when they put their applications in today, then approval should be granted tomorrow. However, this is not how the, the system works. We do have a process that's in place, and we have to follow it for the most part. And sometimes it does include going to public consultations, and this process can be prolonged. Again, there's also the possibility of, you know, we're getting appeals, and residents would probably not be okay with whatever the developer is proposing. And so the developers need to know that we are working assiduously to ensure that we turn over their approvals as fast as possible, but be patient with us. We do have operational procedures to follow. And I'll now hand back to Dave.
Thank you, Donna. So to try and address some of the challenges that Donna mentioned, that, you know, some of them are historic, some of them are more acute and more recent, we have, the next two slides will describe our program and service levels for 2025 and our goals for 2024, 2025. So one program that we have on the drawing board is to create a pre-application system for new applications coming in, and this would give assurance to the development industry that all requirements are provided upfront through a precirculation to city departments. This would be through a formalized for, a fee-for-service process, and this would basically front-end all the legwork before a formal application comes into the department. So once we get a formal application, you can kind of consider it to be like kind of a polished diamond that's ready to go, ready to be put forward to council for consideration at that point, so that when council and planning board sees an application, all the backend work has already been done, and we're not caught in a back-and-forth loop with any developer or any, any property owner. Also, to address backlog in complaints that have built up over part of the past year, we're going to be having a new bylaw enforcement officer coming on board soon, and this will implement our bylaw enforcement program that will cover the zoning and development bylaws, as well as short-term rentals, garden suites, and any and all other bylaw-related matters which have otherwise, to this point, not been so much handled in-house by the planning department. And dovetailing with these two proposed programs, we hope that this would increase permit response rate and turnaround times across the board. We're also going to continue with our heritage engagement programs, which are currently handled by Todd Saunders for the heritage board, as well as councillors. And looking at continuous improvement program of updating our, our departmental policies and procedures, creating a policies and procedures manual, which we don't really have at the current point in time. And so, lastly, again, this links into the five, some of the five priorities that we're noting on this slide, first of which, first and foremost, and the most significant of these is to complete the new official plan for the city of Charlottetown, hopefully by the end of the following calendar year, 2024. And dovetailing with that is the implementing zoning and development bylaw, revising language in the new zoning bylaw and fixing any errors, omissions, inconsistencies. This is a great opportunity to clean up the bylaw, make it more plain language for the development industry and for members of the public, and to ensure that it has complete consistency with the new land use policies for the city. Also, a suggestion here to hire perhaps an additional building inspector. I've had a lot of conversations with our chief building official over the last number of weeks, as well as our other building inspector. We are currently down one person in that, in that sub-department, I like to call it. Our full complement is three inspectors inclusive of the CBO. But after talking, you know, at great length with the CBO and our inspector, you know, the ideal would be to have potentially four inspectors for a full complement in that team, so that while at one point we have enough planners handling everything upfront on development review for zoning and, and minor major variances and so forth, that doesn't really mean much if we have a bottleneck when it come, when the permits start flowing from those Planning Act application reviews. Also, another priority would be, given that we have more staff that have come on recently, and we may have more staff yet coming, to look at the physical space considerations for the planning department. We're currently located, as everybody knows, on the first floor of 70 Kent Street, and I know that there are plans in the works to look at a potential move to a larger physical space for the department, but that's yet to be, be confirmed at the current point in time. And a couple of, you could arguably say less significant, but more operational matters when you compare them to the context of the new official plan, new zoning bylaw, would be perhaps improvements and upgrades to our existing phone system. We've had a few little glitches here and there that may be served better by a new system, as well as reevaluating our software requirements and access to software. Under that, we've included implementation of an e-permitting system for members of the public. So on that note, I'm open, Donna and I are here, available to answer any questions and feedback and response from council on...
Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a few comments first? Just get you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna and David. I call them the dream team. They're really getting a lot of things done over there. The department has come a long way in the last year from going from basically a triage mode into almost a full complement of staff, so kudos to CAO Eleanor and, and the rest of the team for getting to where we are today. Just a question that, just a more of a clarification in terms of budget. So last year was 170 million we collected in permits, this year we're at 145 million. Maybe this isn't a, maybe, I would assume it's just an in and an out, but on our very own developments that we do, they still need to have permits? So does that money still flow through the department? So for example, like Simmons Rink would still need a permit in order to be built, so does that, that money still flow through the department to be captured for budget?
Through, through the chair, Deputy Mary Yankoff, that, those monies are captured to help fund, fund staff review for, for those developments. So it's not, it's not what was alluded to in one of the previous presentations, I believe, by Public Works of the equivalent of like a development charge. So really, the, the fees collected, like the dollar value that you see, that's the estimated value of, of the construction value of all the projects combined. But the fees that we charge on applications would be for recovery of staff time to, to really make, make it fee, cost neutral to the city for our reviews and inspections.
Thank you.
Just, just one sec, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I probably just worded it the wrong way, but I appreciate the update. So, thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, and then Counselor Twill, and Counselor...
Yes, thank you, Dave and Donna. Your priorities, and you said a new building or a larger building you're planning on moving to? Like, where did that come from? Because we just purchased that building not that long ago, a few years ago, just for planning. So it's just, are we just going to leave that going, or what's going on there?
Did, who wants to take that on?
I'll take that.
Okay.
Thank you, Worship. So we're, we have a lot of staff that we've hired, so we're looking at accommodating where to put all our new staff. The likely movement for them is upstairs.
Yeah.
Not to a separate building.
Okay, thank you. You said...
To look like you would have stated is that we're moving to a larger facility. That's two-floor. That's great, because, you know, because we just paid that, and we just did all the renovations, and I was saying, that ain't going to pass.
just did all the renovations. And I was saying, that ain't going to pass. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Twill?
It's, it's, you know, the department's evolving as, as, you know, as the days and the months go past. There's a, you know, you talk about more, more building inspectors. In terms of personnel that's now under contract, that's doing, working on specific projects, can you give me a thumbnail sketch as to how many people are under contract, working in collaboration with the planning department?
Through, through the chair, Councillor Twill, what I can speak to is that we do have a couple of staff members who are there on a part-time basis. We have a development officer and a heritage officer who are both on a part-time basis. We previously did have contracts for temporary planning staff, but those contracts have run their course at the present time.
Okay, because, you know, showed up one night here to a meeting and, like, has to do with the parking garage. And there was a planner that was here working on that particular project. It's under contract. So unbeknownst to myself, I was just trying to get a handle on how many or any new people that are working under contract, trying to, trying to get an idea besides, you know, whether it be part-time working in the planning department through heritage, planning, outside consulting work, working under contract. Just trying to get a, yeah, just trying to get an understanding as to, you know, how many people are actually involved in planning per se.
Through the chair, Councillor Twill, like, as I alluded to, we previously, prior to my time here, I understood that we had planners under contract through Dillon Consulting.
Right.
Those are the contracts I'm referring to that have run their course through, you know, that, that was used as a temporary stopgap during this triage period when, when the department was understaffed. We currently have no development planners or policy planners of that nature who are third-party consultants under contract to do work on behalf of the city. The only other thing I can think of is that we did previously have consulting work completed on the new official plan, which has only brought it to a certain point at this point. And I don't know, Donna, if you want to.
That's Upland Planning and the O Group.
And they have been brought on again to recommence the process of the official plan.
Okay, Councillor.
And that will come back to council for approval.
Where are we at in terms of the, the official planning, zoning, development bylaw and doing that review? Have we gone out to tender, to hire a consultant that will help us?
No, we're going to continue on with Upland.
Pardon me?
Upland Consulting, they started, they started it. We just put them on pause because we were engaged with our CAO hiring two new managers. So they will be coming back. And I think, Donna, did you say that we were looking at completing the OP by 2024?
By fall of 2024.
The fall of 2024. The fall next year.
So we're talking another year.
Yes.
We're talking another year. Okay.
Okay.
The inspectors, you know, billing inspectors and bylaw enforcement inspector, you elaborate on what the responsibilities would be for bylaw enforcement inspector, besides, you know, inspecting the validity of SDRs and whether they're legal or not legal. What other responsibilities or assignments would be assigned to a building inspector? Just, I'm looking for a generalization.
Sure. Through the chair, Councillor Twill, it's a great question. And our bylaw enforcement officer would investigate any and all formal complaints which are lodged with the planning and heritage department. So we do get complaints regarding drainage between properties, regarding encroachments of buildings and structures, illegal buildings and structures perhaps being constructed outside a permit. That would be a really big one that our future enforcement officer would investigate. There, there's really a myriad, like a very broad scope of potential complaints that we could receive. It would be anything, not just short-term rental matters, but a lot of physical property-related matters that would run afoul of the zoning and development bylaw. Those, that would be the scope of investigations that the officer would undertake.
Councillor Beck first, and then we'll come back to you. Councillor Beck, we could just get a question from you.
Yeah, just a quick question. Again, a thread. Today seems to be, you know, we looked at the asset management, looking at a tracking system. We looked at Public Works, I think, with a work order tracking system. We're looking here with an e-permitting system. Is there a system that incorporates all those three? Or are we looking at separate systems that don't speak to one another? Maybe it's a, maybe it's a IT question, but is it, can we get one-stop shopping with those things? Or is it something that they are all individual systems?
Thank you, worship. And Rory and I, well, we talk about these things. Funny enough, the system, the background of the system often is Esri, a GIS system, which, where you see the mapping and everything else. So a lot of the tools, even the permitting stuff, often the background is Esri. So given that we're seeing the cross-department need for these different tools, it certainly makes it easier shopping one time where we can plug all these different things in. So we can certainly look into that.
Talked about having four building inspectors. I think that's the number you used. Any thought given to, you know, just hiring a building inspector, but actually hiring a structural engineer, so that when they do inspections of a building, they're able to go into all, all facets of a building, being able to, having the credentials to evaluate a building from a structural perspective, whether it be the foundation, all the ways up to the attic and the roof. Any thoughts given to that?
Through the chair, Councillor Twill, I mean, it's certainly possible that we could recruit for that. The only issue that I see is that finding a credentialed person, a P-Eng with that level of qualification, does go above and beyond what a normal inspector would have in terms of skill and qualification. Not to say that we can't hire somebody, a licensed engineer, to do that work, but it, it does exceed what the normal requirements usually would be for, let's say, a Level One or Level Two inspector. And, and perhaps the pay grades that we would put out there for those positions, based on the salary grid and the union agreement, would not be commensurate with someone of that qualification.
But Shane, but Shane Jones, is he not an engineer? He's a P-Eng.
Through the chair, our chief building official, Mr. Jones, is a P-Eng.
Yeah, is he structural or mechanical? What's, or civil?
I believe he's civil, but I can't, I can't recall exactly.
Yeah, he's, he's civil. Civil engineers, which, which, pardon me? No, he's not, he's not a NASMI. NASMI's a structural engineer. He's a P-Eng with a civil.
Worship, you're, you're confused me.
No, he'll answer it.
Do we have someone, he just said we have an engineer, do we have someone on staff that can go into a building from the basement all the ways up, write up a report, submit it to the department, department to council, so council can make an informed decision from an engineering and from a structural sense? And with all the developments taking place in the city of Charlottetown and the anticipated development that's going to be taking place, don't you think it'd be advantageous to have a structural engineer on staff?
Through the chair, Councillor Twill, like, in an ideal world, yes, but that would exceed the tip, the typical requirements that we would call for, for, for a building inspector, like a Level One, Level Two building inspector, which, which is the categories that we'd be looking to fill, hopefully this year.
Eleanor, your hand's up there. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. So our mandate is to implement the building code. So whether it's a structural engineer or a building codes officer, what they need is the credential to inspect and approve for building code. So we wouldn't go beyond that because we also wouldn't assume the risk of beyond that in terms of looking into structure additional to that. So the, the standard we're looking for is, do they, are they credentialed to implement the building code? And can they deem the application as approved or not approved?
And just CAO, just inform Shane Jones is what level of inspector? He's one of the highest levels inspectors?
He, he is a building codes Level Two. He's our only Level Two. And I can tell you after this summer, they are incredibly difficult to find. Thank you.
So there's a, there's a checkmark right there. Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you, Donna. Thank you for your patience. Now we have finance. Okay. Okay, Betty, take the mic. Okay, Betty?
Okay, due to time, I will attempt to make this as short as possible. And also, I only was suggested that I put a presentation together yesterday, so.
Don't tell us that. I was looking at it and saying it was probably four days.
Anyway, who we are, we're a team of 11. We have three that work on the first floor, manning the front counter, and the rest of us are up on the third floor. And when I approached my staff about doing this and others, more than one person said, "It's so much more fun to come up to the third floor now. You guys are so much more approachable and you sound happy." So I put in there, "We enjoy working together in an environment of professionalism and fun." And also, working with my team, it came to my attention just yesterday that a few years ago, somebody put together a finance team vision statement and mission statement. So just for interest sake, I've included them there as well. This is a list of what we do. We do financial planning, short and long-term operating, and capital financial plans and budgeting, budget monitoring, cash flow management, borrowing and reserves, financial statements. We do accounting, billing and accounting for city revenues from all sources, accounts payable for all city departments, all other accounting functions, reconciliations, et cetera, financial reporting, and preparation of annual audit documentation. And as far as billing goes, I believe I was told that we do approximately 60,000 utility invoices per year. And considering we invoice utilities quarterly, that's quite a number. And as far as accounts payable, we process about 6,500 payments annually, and that represents close to 15,000 invoices. So in addition, in addition to the previous slide, we have some work in insurance administration, managing the general insurance coverage for all city properties, operations, vehicles, equipment, liaising with the insurance broker and insurance companies, as well as the departments for their assistance in putting together inventory lists of what our assets are. Procurement sits with finance. We have a centralized purchasing system for all city departments. We coordinate and review specifications and documentations for contracts and tenders and RFPs, et cetera, and we do some grants administration. Our achievements, we've been doing some bylaw and policy work. New draft procurement bylaw is in, it's been presented to the finance committee and it's in process, and we hope to have that finalized soon. We did a new grant bylaw and policy in the spring, early summer, and we're in the process of tweaking that. Having used it for a few months, we have some suggested improvements. And the next few points are to do with getting things more proactive in the finance department. So these are some things that we're quite proud of, that we're now getting on top of things and doing things a bit more proactively. I probably should have put this one first, but the bottom point there, as of February of this year, we now have, have a full staff complement in finance for the first time in a number of months. And that's enabled us to get things back on track a little bit more. And then going back up, just under the policy work, the municipal capital expenditure grant submission, the MCEG. When I first started here, getting close to a year ago now, we had a contracted person who, who did that for us, a former staff member who was on contract. And it, at that time, we were, it took 390 days after the quarter closed for that submission to be put in. We've now taken that over and done it internally, and we have already submitted the, actually, it's, it's with the, the province for their review before we do the final submission. So almost ready to go is a submission for the quarter ended at the end of September. So that'll be a 60-day turnaround time. So we're quite proud of how much more quickly we're getting that turned around. And we received 2.5 million MCG, MCEG annually. So that certainly helps our cash flow. The audit was completed a little bit earlier this year than it was last year. And the big piece for me is we actually finalized the financial year-end. We had all the audit journal entries posted, and the year, year-end rollover done two months earlier than we did last year. So yesterday, we did the year-end rollover for the previous fiscal year-end. It was done in April of this year. The utility finance group, the folks that are down on the first floor, they have transitioned to the Spry Point Building System, which has increased their efficiency and reduced costs. There it says here, in excess of 60,000 utility invoices are processed during the year. And of these, 33% are now delivered electronically versus none a year ago. So because of our improved technology, we're now able to do those electronically. So that leads to savings of postage and other costs in the area of $20,000. The accounts payable team now scan and attach all invoices to the transaction in the Great Plains Accounting Software, giving easier access to invoice information to users, including the auditors. This means we no longer have to keep the paper copies, so we save time on, on filing. And the priorities we have for the upcoming year is to continue to work with the Environment and Sustainability Department on the sustainable procurement process. We would like to work towards a more paperless accounts payable system, where we don't actually print out all the invoices, but instead have a database to keep them in that would track authorizations and make that process more efficient and save a lot of paper. And the folks downstairs are interested in having more services available online, forums and such that customers can fill out online instead of having to come into City Hall. And the next piece I have in here is a couple of slides from the pre-budget consultation survey. So this gives a summary here of the question we asked, "Does the city allocate enough budget dollars to the following community services?" And the purple part say we need more budget dollars allocated here. The kind of orangey color says just the right amount. And the green part is where they say we're allocating too many resources there. So a highlight there is the, I guess they're both in the area of parks and recreation. So the first one is parks and green space. Forty-six out of the, what is that, 69, I think it was, folks are saying we need more resources allocated to the parks and green space. And there seemed to be a common theme in the submissions regarding. Turf. So I think there was a particular, pardon me? Yeah, a particular group. I think Jacqui was co-reading these originally, and she said at 11 o'clock on Monday morning, there was 18 submissions. And by noon, when it closed, an hour later, there was now 69 submissions. So they, they kind of had a, a big play
Just copy and paste.
To, to get their, their, their comments in there. So yes, they want turf fields and folks also want more recreation programming.
Thank you.
This question asked was, "Does the city allocate enough budget dollars to the following infrastructure and development services?" And in this area, the ones that receive the most folks saying we need more budget dollars here are sidewalk and road maintenance and STR rental regulations. Although, reading the detailed comments, there was at least one person who said, "Send the sidewalks, no plowing back to the property owner. Why is the city doing that?" So with any of these, you've got some folks who say spend more and other folks saying spend less. This question was, "Does the city allocate enough budget dollars to the following community services?" And efforts in crime control and overall police services are the top ones there, and that follows similar themes that we've heard today. Um, the, these ones gave sort of choices people could make. There was a couple more questions on if you wanted more services in a certain area, where would you like to see the money come from? Do you want it higher property taxes, reallocated from somewhere else? There was a few, um, suggestions made, and, and surprisingly, there were a few people who did say they were open to higher taxes. Um, some said, you know, charge the higher, I guess it was the larger prop, that the top ten percent of property values, charge them more taxes, or charge medium and small businesses more taxes. And that is all I have there. If anybody has any questions, I will be happy to try to answer them.
Councilor McLeary, did you want to say a couple words?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Manager Betty. And, uh, I'd just like to, um, uh, more, more of a comment, uh, to Betty and her team. Um, Betty, as a new finance manager come in, and I'm sure Betty, uh, in, in talking with you and, and working with you and seeing, having a year under her belt now, uh, it was pretty much, I'm sure, when you got going, uh, pretty much drinking out of a fire hose. Yeah, we had the, uh, you had the BDO report to deal with, um, and I think we're delivering on those, um, uh, on those metrics and those recommendations, uh, year-to-date at least. KBMG report, the governance thing, uh, procurement bylaw. Um, we're, uh, have an audit that I think is, um, a little more timely on. I know you're not where you want to have it, but I think this time next year, you'll, uh, you'll be meeting the, uh, the expectations in terms of a timeline. Certainly, the, uh, monthly financial statements that, uh, come to the committee and ultimately to council are, um, are, uh, are up to date and current, and, uh, and, uh, accolades again to you and your staff. And, um, I think, uh, once you get, uh, where you want to be operationally, I think, uh, it's going to be, uh, great financial information for the council and the city going forward. And, uh, thank you for that.
Councilor Twill?
Thank you for your presentation, Betty. Um, it's intriguing, the, uh, pre-budget consultation, and some of the, um, some of the areas where they would like to see, um, more focus, more resources. If you look at, can you go back to that chart, please, the second page? Second page there where, of the, um, of the requests from the community.
Facilitation survey?
Yeah, survey. Second page, survey. So where was the, uh, emphasis on crime? Okay, where's that, where, where was that? Probably the next page.
Page one sixty-three.
Yeah. Thank you. So, as you say, purple indicates more, more, more requests for extra efforts in crime control. But if I look at this, um, look at this chart, the question from the community, they wants, they want more, more efforts in crime control. And that doesn't seem to jive with, um, the presentation we had earlier, where it said ninety-three percent is, is satisfied with, uh, with, uh, you know, uh, crime, crime in our city. So there seems to be a contradiction when I look at this chart compared to the chart that we saw this morning. Um, but I, I can't say that I'm, and then look overall, police services, once again, it's, those are high numbers. So that's telling us something when we're getting feedback from the community wanting more resources, uh, when it comes to dealing with crime. I mean, that's, that's pretty, uh, that's pretty, those results are pretty glaring. So nonetheless, I think that's important. And from a parks and recreation perspective, you know, Betty, uh, more green space. If we can go back to that chart, please. Yeah, I mean, parks and green space, I mean, that, that's a high number. That's an extremely high number. Indoor recreational facilities, including, uh, community centers and arenas. Again, good numbers, recreational programming. Um, you know, and as our manager said, we, uh, from a traditional sense, I'm paraphrasing, from a traditional sense as to, you know, the requests and the, and the feedback we're getting from the community, those, once again, those are high, high numbers. So, uh, we're going to have to obviously dedicate a lot more resources and dollars into all of those areas. But, uh, I think this gives us a good litmus test and, and a good insight. And, uh, appreciate you, uh, bringing that forward, Betty. Like, and the other thing you mentioned too was the procurement bylaw. As you know, I've been, I've been lobbying hard for a procurement bylaw. We did have, we do have policies in place, but bylaw gives us much more teeth. And I think that, um, it sends a powerful message out to the community that when it comes to procurement and tendering and, uh, RFPs, all that kind of stuff, bylaw means that much more. So I look forward to, uh, the passing of a new bylaw, particularly when it comes to procurement.
Councilor Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Betty, for that. And, uh, I must say, I'm impressed. I think you're the only department that didn't ask for staff. All the other nine did. But, uh, Councilor Twill, getting back to your survey, and you said with the crime thing here, but I think what the police report was this morning, ninety-three percent said they felt they're safe in the city. I think that's where that number came from.
That was a community survey, community survey.
Yes, exactly. It, like, it wasn't with the crime and anything. He, he just said they felt safe as a resident of the city. I think that that's where the ninety-three percent, because it had nothing to do with crime. But, but this one does.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
No, no, no. Just one, just one sec. Eleanor, can you verify what, what Councilor Ramsey said? That, that's-
I'm pretty sure that's-
It was the survey. So I've got a couple of things to clarify. Um, so one was the community survey about the feelings of safety in the community. So that was the result. Um, and that was a proper survey sample. So this is a simple survey that we put up. I think we had sixty-six respondents. So you have to kind of take it with a grain of salt that it may not necessarily represent the whole community versus the community survey sample would. Um, but this is a good kind of litmus test at, you know, what should we talk about and focus on for the budget? Um, and I, I actually don't think, uh, Chief would disagree.
No, no, no.
In terms of policing and the, the number of police officers he needs to deliver more police services. So like crime control, like what you're saying.
Yep. Good. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, I, I think what I would like to see, uh, with the survey that was done on police and the survey that was done here, I'd like to look at the criteria. I'd like to, um, look at an analytical, uh, you know, look at the analytics even closer. I'd like to know, for example, is this across the city of Charlottetown? Or is this coming from a particular neighborhood and community? That's important to me, considering a number of the challenges over the last, you know, two and a half years, um, regarding certain facilities that are, that were dropped into our facility. But I, I appreciate seeing this here, Betty, because to me, this gives me, what I've always suspected, this gives me a much more accurate sample or, or indication of what's coming from the community.
Yeah. Okay. And Betty, again, the, the survey conducted, how many respondents were there to the survey?
I believe it was sixty-nine.
Yeah, so the, the community survey, I think, was five hundred. Yeah. Wider, wider, wider audience. Okay. Um, any other questions? No? Thank you. So we have, did you want to sum it up there? Just one sec, just one sec. Do you want to sum it up there, Eleanor?
Uh, thank you, Worship. So we didn't really, the, the reason why we didn't put finance in it originally, because this is the whole finance show, like in terms of budget and what we're going through. Um, so, I mean, the priority is our budget, uh, plus, plus the items, the other items that we're working through. So I'm not sure-
Nope. Good, good.
Anything additional.
Do you, just let her just wrap up here? Do you want to just go to your report, Eleanor, and then we'll come back to you? Yeah, she'll be, she's going to be staying here. Go ahead. Yeah, she's just wrapping up with hers, the CAO. You're sure you can ask a question? What's your question?
Betty, just a, just a follow-up, please. Um, with what you're, or what, what you've identified here, and you've heard the presentations all day today, are you, as a manager of planning, going to be recommending to the finance committee, I hope you're not, a tax increase?
No, we're not going, that, that, we're not going there yet. No. We, we, just keep going with your report, please.
So is that not a reasonable question?
No, that's not a, we're not going. No, I don't know. Who's talking about that? Just wrap it up there. Holy jeez. Well, no, I don't want to, taxes increases, who's talking that way? She's not. She never-
Because of all the requests that were made here today.
Yeah, well, we'll-
The mayor, I think, it's a reasonable question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cipher through that one. All the committees. Okay. Did you want to go there, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's just wrapping it up.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, thank you so much for this really, uh, long day. I know it's been a long day for everyone, so I'll try and move, uh, through relatively, relatively quick. And before I get going, I just want to say, um, how much I've enjoyed and how impressive the staff presentations have been today. I think it's been pretty amazing. Right. So I've, I've got this framed under the office of the CAO and who we are. Well, it's myself, uh, there's an executive assistant, um, to the chief administrative officer, as well as the executive assistant to the mayor, um, and council, who reside within the office of the chief administrative officer. So what we do, I literally lifted this off the municipal affairs website to describe what the chief administrative officer does. But essentially, you know, my job is to make sure that the resolutions and policies of council are complied with and its programs are implemented that come out of, um, budget here. Um, my job is to advise and inform council on the operation and affairs of the city. I'm responsible for hiring, directing, managing and supervising all employees of the city of Charlottetown, also exercising the powers, um, and duties that are under the Municipal Government Act for me to take care of. It's, uh, sometimes doesn't make me very popular, but my job is also to notify council if any action or inaction by council or the municipality is contrary to a bylaw or resolution of council or provision of the Municipal Government Act or any other act. Um, and of course, the executive assistants, um, provide assistance, uh, to myself and the mayor and council. So, uh, eight months, fairly, fairly short tenure here. I've tried to highlight, uh, some of the things that have happened here in terms of achievements. Uh, so the first up was identifying some governance steps and addressing the issues that were in relation to the BDO report. Some things are still, uh, being worked through out of that. Uh, organization of the safe spaces for everyone, the mayor's conversation on unhoused encampments. Updating, uh, council reports, committee reports to provide clarity in relation to stakeholder engagement, budget implications and connections to the strategic plan. Restructured planning and development, uh, the department after a near collapse, where we were down to, um, literally three people responsible for permits, planning, complaints, uh, for a municipality of forty thousand people. It was a pretty serious moment, um, that I'm thankful to the community that they were able to have a lot of patience as we, uh, worked out through that time, and same with council. I know it was a tough time for everyone. Um, positively resolved, um, Bud's PEI investigation into the city regarding closed meetings. Hired eight new positions, including two managers. The bulk of that was the restructuring and planning. And, um, sending an intermunicipal and industry advocacy letter, uh, for changes to the provincial land use planning legislation to remove red tape for development of housing in Charlottetown. So some of the challenges, um, since coming here, uh, the, the, one of the biggest challenges is improving city employee morale and culture in a time of incredible change. So there was a lot of change, uh, before I arrived, and then there's a lot of change still. So it's really difficult for everyone as we're moving through to make sure that we're resilient in this. Um, another challenge is right sizing the organization structure, the organizational structure to growth, uh, to our growth, which I'll talk about in a couple minutes. Um, modernizing governance in alignment with the Municipal Government Act and associated, uh, needed resources. To my understanding, uh, what I, what I've been told to this point is there was never an accounting of what was in the Municipal Government Act and all the policies, procedures and bylaws that the municipality needed to, to update. So that's something that we'll be looking at. Uh, another challenge is our organization-wide legal expenses, which I'll touch on in a bit as well. We have a need for corporate planning to support the strategic plan. You heard a lot about operational plans today. We have a need for risk management, um, and contract management, uh, a need for a strategic executive leadership team that can lead these things, um, and a need for a customer service management with system, which you've heard talked about in a number of ways today. The most recent was client management system. I just called it a customer management system. So, um, I'm not going to go through this line by line, but I did want council to have it. Uh, this is a, um, matrix that breaks down all our bylaws and provides the status of these bylaws and where they're at. The ones that are noted in red are ones that were last amended ten years ago or longer. Uh, yellow are ones that were last amended five years ago or longer, and green are the ones that were amended within the last four years. Something to note in some of these bylaws, it could be glowing green, and we might still have issues with it, where it needs updating, in which case you'll find that in, um, in that column where it says, "Updates needed." Um, we did have one bylaw that was raised today, uh, about capital cost bylaws. So that's a new bylaw that, um, we will, should be looking at into the new year. So there's a couple of pages for this, and I'll, I'll leave it with council to, um, take a look through. One thing I do want to highlight to you, and this one's, um, I've categorized them by, uh, council committees. So under protective and emergency services, it's quite revealing, uh, in terms of how we've, this organization has grown. So, um, the organization right now, we don't have a lot of, uh, strategic capacity. We have a lot of on-the-ground, you get the systems done, get the work done. And when you don't have that strategic policy piece, what you see is your bylaws and your policies getting outdated because no one has the capacity to be able to work on this. So when you look at protective and emergency services, it's no surprise that most of them are red and yellow, because nobody in fire and police have the time to be updating these bylaws or, um, in some cases, the expertise, and there's a policy analyst being asked for, uh, in this budget. So just keep moving along here. So, um, I do want to talk about organizational structure. And before we go into that, I just want to talk about, uh, the role of the chief administrative officer under the Municipal Government Act, as well as our requirements here under the city of Charlottetown staffing bylaw. So, um, when I talked about what the, the function of the chief administrative officer is, really the responsibility is for all staff and the management and staff, and that includes how we report to each other and how we deliver. And my job is to deliver on the policies, programs and systems that council puts into place. So I need to be able to have a structure that is, um, resilient, strategic, um, and has enough on-the-ground people to actually get the job done. So, um, I just want to go in, setting that, I just want to talk a little bit about organized additional structure and, um, some needs in this area. So this is what the organizational structure looked like when I first arrived at the city of Charlottetown. This was, uh, fifteen direct reports to the chief administrative officer, which is quite frankly untenable. Um, and interim director, uh, who is here, who is still here, but is leaving at the, in the middle of December, weeks from now, who had six direct reports. Best practice in terms of leadership, um, is to have approximately six to eight direct reports. Once you get beyond eight direct reports, the communication systems start to fail, and you're unable to support the leadership on your team the way that you need to. Where I'm proposing that we're going in terms of organizational structure, um, we already had approval in last year's budget for two directors. One of the directors that, um, we've recruited for, the Director of Integrated Growth, uh, we're just at a point of, um, offer for this position. And the other director, Director of Finance and Corporate Services, we're just about to enter a second round of interviews. So when you look at this org chart here, the Director of Community Services is actually Sue Fraser, who I've mentioned is leaving in a couple of weeks. So, uh, in this, uh, org chart, you can see that the different departments have been aligned under, under the directors. Um, and in doing so, it's reduced down, uh, the- reduced down the direct reports to levels that are actually manageable for the leaders. Under integrated growth, you'll notice that there is a new department under there, which, again, it's not so much the new department that I have to come through to council for permission for, but what I do need to come to council for permission for is a manager to lead that department for council to approve. So this particular department, engineering, infrastructure, and project management, a couple of issues that we've been facing within engineering and infrastructure, that portion of public works, is the current manager right now is dealing with the bulk of complaints coming through there, our public works, so it's hard to focus on the infrastructure side of things. What this department offers opportunity in is to specialize in focusing on our infrastructure in the municipality and new developments. Infrastructure in the sense that, like, if you're going to build a road or replace a road, making sure that the pipes underneath it, seeing when those pipes need to be replaced, and trying to align that. So we're not putting in a road a year later, ripping up the road to fix the pipes underneath the road. So the job of this department is to make sure that those things are aligned. It's also an opportunity, not right away, but to build out a project management aspect of the organization that can help stick handle some of these projects that we see happening within parks, some of them, some of them may be in the water utility, but centralizing this, so there's more accountability and ability to report back. Now, by me saying this, it's not saying that anyone in this organization is not doing a great job, because they certainly are. The idea here is to streamline, put some related activities together so we can synergize and get more out of it. And, oh, the other one piece that I wanted to address in there as well, that we're lacking on right now, and I don't think our manager of public works is here right now, one area that we're very much struggling in is new development and review of drainage and issues around drainage and stormwater management. And this, this particular team would have that, development engineers in there as well. So then the whole theme of integrated growth is making sure that we are growing together, our infrastructure's going together, our economic development initiatives are growing together. There's a future department in there that I'm not looking at for maybe another couple of years, which involves corporate real estate. I can't remember how many buildings Scott said that we had earlier today, but we do have a number of buildings. We have a number of leases. We actually have a lot more property, which is much more surprising than you might think we have. And I'd like to be able to collect that up into one place and have someone who's really responsible for negotiating these leases and keeping eyes on our real estate to make sure that we're getting the best return on some of the properties that we have. So that's for the future. The department, or the division of community services, the real focus of that and the theme of that division is customer service. So under there, you have a lot of the front-facing departments, environment sustainability, parks and recreation, public works, and the water and sewer utility. So that strategic director would be really focusing on how can we best deliver customer service to the municipality. And then the theme under finance and corporate services is serving the organization itself, our internal functions, and how to streamline those best, risk management, operational plans, all those different things. So all I've included in this, I haven't broken it down any further than this, this is just to give a high-level view of how we can organize ourselves and prepare ourselves better for the growth that's coming and the teams as they grow out. Now just keep moving here. Okay, so I want to move into, and please don't get stuck on these positions today, because we're not making any decisions on positions today, but we've heard all day, people talking about the need for different positions and how we need to build out our teams. So I wanted to provide council with the filter of how we've been looking at this and plotting it out over the next five years or so, what demand would be for permanent positions. So I don't have contracts in here, in this, what I'm talking about here is permanent positions. So the matrix here is divided up into three categories. The first category in red are positions that we need in order to actually provide the services we have right now. So these positions, in other words, we're lacking in these services, and we need these positions to actually deliver these services, okay? So for twenty-four, twenty-five, there's thirty-nine, and I'm about to go through that, so don't get stuck on that number yet. The second category on here is in yellow. That's the positions to improve or build upon the services, so we're building things out. And then the green one is where we become, you know, industry municipal leaders if we add those kind of positions. So these are plotted out for the next number of years, and sometimes what happens is the positions that you see in the yellow initially start in the yellow, but as time goes on, they'll end up moving into the red if we don't, you know, make some movement on some of the positions. Okay, so what's, staff were asked if they could come up with their desired positions for the year, and we haven't sat down and prioritized any of them yet. We're just starting with the full number that everyone, everyone provided. So nothing's gone through this budget process of taking some, some out. So given previous discussions, especially at the HR committee, the KPMG report came up. And what I wanted to provide here to council was a summary of what was recommended in the KPMG report, the positions that were approved in last year's budget, and then the positions that still need to be considered that were recommended in the KPMG report. And one thing I'll say about the KPMG report is that report was a real snapshot in time. And it was done at a time when a lot of, a lot of individuals who participated were acting in their roles. And we've, we've kind of settled that down a bit now, and people have moved into these departments and have had more time to think about the positions. So which you'll notice, the thirty-nine positions that I referenced earlier are all listed on the far, far-right column where it says preliminary positions for twenty-four, twenty-five budget to be prioritized and finalized. So you might notice that the KPM, KPMG report recommended positions, there may be none left to be considered, but then you'll see another position that showed up in twenty-four, twenty-five. And I'll also note that KPMG report was, was done prior to my arrival as well. Okay? So this just provides a list, a list of all the different departments, and this particular one is categorized in terms of divisions. So finance and corporate services are highlighted, and then along with the different positions. So I'm not going to run down through each position and try and justify each position. What I wanted to give council was just a snapshot of what these positions are, what the thirty-nine are. And the expectation is that we will work through this with the respective committees and figure out what positions we can move on and what ones we can't. And if you just go back to this matrix, any positions that don't make it this year, you're likely going to see them in the red for next year. So every time we push off these positions, that list of the red gets bigger. The other option is, which, what I'd like to look at with the new senior leadership team, is look at all the services that we're providing. And there, there has to be a point where we can't keep adding services, and services, and services without finding more revenue or funding sources. So there's going to come a time where we're going to have to say, this service, we can't do it anymore. Or when a new service is coming on, and actually Frank was very good about articulating this earlier, every time you build a new rec facility or you upgrade it, you need more people for it. So we have to look at this comprehensively when we make these decisions in terms of services and policies and programs that we're offering. So this matrix, you'll just see this from here on out. I think it's really good in terms of communicating where, where we're at and what we're working with. And it's also a really great tool to track these positions year after year. So this is here, this PDF presentation was emailed to council last night. We'll also make it available on the website. Given that it's been shared today in this meeting, we'll also make the survey results available on the website as well, so the public can look. So this is all here in terms of the positions. Last year, so I'll move on from that. Last year, during budget, we were requested to look at in-house, an in-house lawyer for the municipality. So what we did, we, we did take a look, and the city's legal fees since 2020, we're getting close to half a million dollars every year that we're spending on legal fees. So when I look at all the invoices that came in on these legal fees, and our, so don't take this the wrong way, like the firm we have on, they're fabulous, so this is not a criticism of who's doing the work for us. So what's going on is a lot of work that we're sending to the lawyers. Sometimes it's almost like they're organizing us in terms of the questions or what's going on, or projects that are being, that are ongoing, that we're using them for. There's a way that we can bring that in-house if we have a lawyer on board who stick handles that kind of stuff in-house. The salary range for a municipal city lawyer is about one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars a year. There are municipal lawyers who are quite capable of handling most of the planning stuff that comes through the door, from development agreements, easement, encroachments. These same lawyers can also review contracts. The most common stuff that municipalities get, one person can do that. If you hire the lawyer, you are still going to need a legal firm on retainer. And the reason why you're going to need that is you want someone external who will have, engage in the union negotiation and arbitration. There may be some lawsuits that do require a bit of a larger legal team. So there'll be circumstances when you have to use the law firm. But a lot of the day-to-day stuff that we're being invoiced for is something that a general municipal lawyer should be able to address. So there is a recommendation in here, and it's something that will, again, bring through the, the process, so no lawyer decision needed in this moment today. But I just wanted to show that the work's been done. This is where we've landed as a recommendation from administration. Should I get to the end, or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, keep going. I think I'm almost there. Right. Okay, so, so the top five priorities right now for the office of the chief administrative officer, and I kind of list this, I really need council's direction in terms of what your priorities are, and then I'm going to rejig what, what I need to do. But, you know, number one on the list is collectively. So me, the leadership of the organization, council, really working together to make sure that we can improve employee morale and building a really positive corporate culture, so everyone can come to work and be happy and healthy and resilient in terms of mental health. The second point in terms of priority is getting this senior leadership team in place. This will really help me to be able to do my job and keep my resiliency and mental health. And then number three is the development of strategic plan, action plan. We have a little bit of one, but it needs to be built out more, as well as that corporate plan and the department plans. Number four, and don't take these, like, number four could be number two or number one, you can move them around. Number four, and this is very important, the successful negotiation of a new memorandum of understanding with the government of PEI. And number five is modernizing our bylaws, policies, risk management, and contract control. And like I said, after we get through this budget process with council, some of these may shift, and probably not number one, but the rest of them will be able to get moved around. Okay, so my last slide here before closing today was to talk about council's five priorities, but I know we're missing some folks now, so I don't know if this discussion might want to happen at the end of the day tomorrow.
Yeah, do you want to leave it till tomorrow morning?
Yes, okay.
I think we should. Is, that's okay? Yeah, you, you don't want to address it right away?
This one's just council's five top priorities for the budget, like going into the budget. Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot of information given today. And just, just talking about our engineer and staff, I know we have Richard McEwen as an engineer, Joshua, is it Joshua or Josh?
Yes.
Albert, Riley, Scott, Shane Jones, and Paul Johnson. So we get, we get a lot of engineers here, and I think that we, they all do a great job for the, for the corporation. And if I was looking at priorities, I definitely want to have climate action, that plan, that climate action plan, implementing actions.
No, they don't worry.
No, no, I'm just saying to my own. No, no. Because I want to get mine out there first to achieve our goals this year. And that fiber optic network, let's get that in place by mid-2024. And I got more for tomorrow, too. Any, any questions?
Question for CAO?
Oh, no, Council Twill, did you have your hand up? No?
No.
Okay. No, don't be like that.
This is either room for change.
Council Ramsey.
Eleanor, thank you for that. And the only thing that stuck in my thing is, was legal fees, which they've been going up every year as, as long as I've been here. But it just seems like every, every committee, when they get together or something, that someone says, it's being discussed at legal. No, no matter if it's a small issue and a large issue, but you hit the nail on the head by saying, like, they're almost governing us or almost doing our work. And we all know that legal is not cheap. Because I think they might charge a couple hundred dollars an hour or some of that. I mean, even by picking up the phone. But that's the thing that stuck in my head, is that every committee you watch or you're on, oh, no, that's what legal. You know, and that's, I mean, we've got to clean up our own mess up there. Thank you.
Okay. I got my priorities out there, but tomorrow, please give yours. Council Twill, did you have a question about the, the legal fees, or, you've always been talking about it?
I don't know, I've talked about legal fees for a long, long time.
Yeah.
I never suggest, pardon me?
He never, no, he never quits.
I never suggested that an in-house lawyer would be able to handle all of
We know that.
the, you know, the legal responsibilities for the, for municipal government. But I think having an in-house lawyer would even be a great asset to us. I'd like to have the opportunity to go in and talk to an in-house lawyer and ask questions about the legalities of this issue or that issue, or, you know, are we vulnerable, this issue, or, you know, regardless of what the case may be, where the city could be held liable. Because then when you're formulating your, you know, your analysis, then you can be much more informed. And that's, you know, I've always felt that. And that's not criticism of our law firm. No. But an in-house lawyer, from an elected official's perspective, I think, be advantageous. Yeah, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Council Twill. And again, tomorrow morning at nine AM. Thank you very much for showing up. Yeah, well, that's why you can, you can come in for the whole day. But my point is, is that I think I really appreciate that you come in here. Thank you very much for the staff, for all the information that you provided, and just mull over the priorities tomorrow. Mine are already out there. I got a couple more that I'm going to bring up tomorrow, too.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, we do have to have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn moved by Council McAleer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. All those in favor?
Okay, my arm's up for an hour.
Thank you.